I'd like to call to order the City of Oak Harbor Planning Commission's regular meeting, September 27, 2016. Item number one, the roll call. Let the record show that Commissioner Merriman is not present this evening. Item two, approval of the minutes, August 23, 2016.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 23 meeting as presented.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein wasn't at the last meeting.
Item number three, as we do at each and every meeting, is the public comment. We, as a planning commission, will accept public comment for items not otherwise on the agenda for the first 15 minutes of the planning commission meeting. Anyone in the audience who would like to address the commissioners on any subject other than what's on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I close out part of our meeting. Item number four, public hearings and meetings. A, and this is a hearing, a public hearing, Maron Woods Planned Residential Development, PRD, and preliminary plat. I call on...
As this is a quasi judicial proceeding, it is necessary to engage the commission in a colloquy intended to determine whether or not there is a problem with the appearance of fairness, if, to ensure that all commissioners can hear this particular matter.
If I may, Nikki, I'd actually like to share that I intend to recuse myself from this matter for two reasons. The first is that I have had limited ex parte communication with the real estate agent in regards to this project. And the second is, given the nature of the business that I am in, it is possible that I could fund a loan within this development and benefit financially from that transaction.
Thank you very much. If you would like to step down and see yourself out. So I will go through this list of questions, and we can go down the line, and you can each answer yes or no. And if clarification is needed, I will ask for clarification. So does any member of this commission have knowledge of or have conducted business with either the proponents or the opponents of this particular plat?
No.
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 Yes.
Okay. Would you explain on the record what those contacts have been?
In early July or late June of 2000, in late June or early July of 2013, I met with Richard Maron. Subsequent to that, I had several email communications with Richard and George Maron on the 5th, 8th, and 16th, 5th and 8th of July, and then met with Richard and George Maron on the 10th of July 2013 about the possibility of photo banker Cucci, the real estate company I work for, representing them in the sale of the property. On the 16th of July, I received a communication back from Richard Maron that they had, they were still considering the proposal that I had presented to them on the 10th. On the 26th, they, he sent me an email saying that he had rejected that proposal and that they weren't going to be listing the property with me. And then on the 11th of September 2013, he informed me that they were still wanting to sell, but they were not, had not yet picked a real estate agent. I've not had any communications with them since the 11th of September 2013, and I'm not involved in the current project.
Thank you. So does any member of this commission have either a pecuniary or non pecuniary interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
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 Does any member of this commission know whether or not their employer has a financial interest in the property or area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding?
No.
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 Does any member of this commission live or own property within 300 feet of the area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding?
No.
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 No. No.
Does any member of this commission have any special knowledge about the substance of the merits of this proceeding which would or could cause the council member to prejudge the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
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 No. No.
Is there any member of this commission who believes that he or she cannot sit and hear this matter fairly and impartially, both as to the respective positions of the proponents and the opponents in this proceeding?
No.
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 Has any member of the commission had any ex parte contacts concerning this matter?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Commissioner Wassinger, could you please state for the record any ex parte contacts you have had with the proponents or the opponents?
Indirectly, through my son, Brian Wassinger. He and my daughter-in-law have a real estate business, and although they're not under contract, they are doing, doing some business with Waldron Construction. I want the record to show that I have no financial interest in this, nor does my wife. The only communication we've had has been in, I would say, the distant past, say, four to six months ago. He told me about an issue with egress to Swan Town Road. And other than that, I have absolutely no knowledge of anything else with this project.
Since you've disclosed that you've had ex parte contacts, I have to turn to the audience and offer the audience the opportunity to respond to your comments if they so choose. And do you have any interest in recusing yourself?
No.
Is there any member of the audience who, because of the appearance of fairness doctrine, wishes to disqualify any member of the commission from hearing this matter? If so, please state the commissioner and the reasons why you believe that commissioner should be disqualified. Hearing none? Free to proceed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it may be appropriate for you to read the introduction portion that you normally read, now that we have this piece of business out of the way?
The planning commission will conduct a public hearing to consider the PRD preliminary plat and subdivision waivers submitted by the George F. Maron Family Trust for a 43-lot single-family residential subdivision known as Maron Woods on 10.6 acres located at 1292 Southwest Swan Town Avenue, parcel number R13204-459-4200. The planning commission may forward a recommendation to the city council after conducting the public hearing.
Okay. I am Ray Lindenberg, Associate Planner with the City of Oak Harbor. I just want to read into record, or put into record, an email that we received today regarding the project. It's from James Family, lives at 2080 Southwest Putnam Drive. The subject of his email is the Maron Woods Planned Residential Development and Preliminary Plat Objection. He says that they have two major concerns regarding the new development of Maron Woods. The concerns are, number one, a speed and traffic increase, and, number two, 2080 Southwest Putnam Drive driveway is a blind spot. He has recommendations if the plan is approved, the first being, please try not to make Southwest Putnam a through street. Says, at the end, at Southwest Putnam end of street, please place Maron Woods HOA use-only playground on the other side of tree line that would be the Maron Woods property. Make the other side a Maron Woods cul-de-sac at the end of Putnam, Southwest Putnam, on the other side of the tree line. This would fix the traffic issue of people potentially speeding through from Lowerland Heller Turnoff, then flying down Tourist/Putnam to cut through Maron Woods to get to Tour Residence or to get to Swan Town Road. Second recommendation, if Southwest Putnam turns into a through street, to add a stop sign at both street corners, Southwest Putnam and Tourist. And number three, if Southwest Putnam turns into a through street, when people turn right on Southwest Putnam, our residence driveway is a blind spot, and we cannot see if people are turning right. We only have three homes right now where neighbors turn right, but if Maron Woods is built, that would be two cars average for 45 homes, which would be an average of 40 to 60 cars roughly turning right every day as opposed to the five cars now. He says he has provided photos to support those two concerns and to thank you for your time.
Ray, I believe that the planning commission, as well as the applicant, will provide a copy of that. Is that correct?
Yes, that should be correct. Yeah. Okay. To get into the presentation here, you'll see that there are a lot of words on my PowerPoint presentation. Don't feel like you have to sit here and read them all, because they are essentially an outline for the comments that will be made here tonight. And if you have any questions, certainly feel free to interrupt, and we can go from there. This presentation's going to be a little bit longer than a typical one would be, because it is a quite complex issue that we're looking at tonight. So, like I said, if you have any questions, feel free to jump right in. First of all, why we're here tonight. The purpose of this hearing is to review the presentation of this preliminary plat, the planned residential development, and the subdivision waiver applications for the proposed Maron Woods subdivision. This is a review process type four, a quasi judicial proceeding intended to review that preliminary plat and associate applications, accept public comment, and to make a recommendation that goes to the city council for their approval. As a quasi judicial proceeding, the hearing is subject to the appearance of fairness doctrine. We've already dealt with that, so we're going to go ahead and move forward. To describe the project in very general terms, it's a 43-lot planned residential subdivision, residential development, PRD subdivision on 10.6 acres. The applicant is requesting a preliminary plat, PRD application, subdivision waiver approval to subdivide the site and create the associated development that goes with that. Public residential streets are proposed to serve the homes within this subdivision. They will connect generally to Putnam Drive on the north end and Southwest Robertson Drive on the south end. The applicant is also proposing to set aside approximately 11% of the site as required for the PRD development by our Oak Harbor Municipal Code. Additionally, there will be 15% of the site preserved or planted, or used for native vegetation, and it's either preserved or planted. They do have that option to remove native vegetation and replace it if it's a situation where they feel that there might be a danger from trees that are falling down and things like that. Open space and native vegetation areas will be spread throughout the development and will be either on commonly owned tracts or in private parcels in an easement. Again, that is the aerial photo of the area. You can see that the yellow line is the city limits for the City of Oak Harbor. The area in that yellow kind of frosted area is the city. The area outside that is the county. To give you a little background on the project history, this kind of first started around 2010, September 2010, the owners of the property submitted a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings. They went through that process, were able to get an approval for their annexation for just the Maron property, which is that forested property. There was a request by the city essentially to include the portion down to the right-hand side there, so as not to create a county enclave. We were not able to get the proper number of signatures to make that go through, so we just had the Maron property come through as the annexation. So that was approved in October of 2012. At that time, the applicant, or at the time of the original application in September 2010, the applicant showed us a proposed, or a conceptual, plan for the property that showed streets connecting to the north, or excuse me, the Southwest Putnam Drive, Southwest Robertson Drive, and to Swan Town Road on the south end. Following that, pre-application was submitted by Kendall Gentry in September of 2014. That was followed up by a formal submittal for the preliminary plat and PRD. By December of 2014, Gentry withdrew the application, and in November of 2015, a formal submittal was submitted by Mr. Rick Dern for the overall project. Again, very similar as the December, or excuse me, the September 2014 approve, or 2014 application. The November 6, 2015 is what we're looking at now. This is the full application that we have, and that's what we reviewed based on. So what we have is a number of different applications. There's a preliminary plat, there's a preliminary PRD, there are the subdivision waivers, which there are four of which, and we'll get into detail on that a little bit later. There's a landscape plan, a land clearing plan, and then there's also a transportation concurrency and the SEPA checklist. Now, those last two are not under review tonight. You're not going to make a decision on those. The decision will be made by staff. The transportation concurrency happens later. The SEPA checklist and SEPA notification already happened. There was no issues with the SEPA, so we just were moving forward with that. For the preliminary plat, city code and state law establish the criteria that they go through, or that we go through to evaluate preliminary plats to determine if they meet the code requirements for the overall design of the preliminary plat. The planning commission will review that, take the comments that we have, and refer that on to the city council. The city council will use those determinations to either approve the preliminary plat or deny that. This is a very small, obviously, copy of the preliminary plat. You did get a copy, I believe, in your packet there, and if you have any questions or need any details, we have full-size plans as well in our office. So the main question for the, for staff when we review this, has the, have the appropriate provisions been made for these items on here? Just to kind of quickly review through those, we have public health, safety, and general welfare, open spaces, drainage ways, transit stops, potable water, sanitary waste, parks, recreation playgrounds, schools and school grounds, sidewalks and safe routes to school, and other relevant facts. Now, without going into full detail on each of these, you can see on your, in your staff report that the application generally met most of these criteria. There were some issues with regards to the other relevant, other relevant facts section at the very end. And specifically on that one, OHMC 2150 080 states that streets, sidewalks, pedestrian or bike paths shall be linked and with, within and between neighborhoods to create a continuous and interconnected network of roads and pathways. Local streets, arterials, and collectors shall be extended to the boundary of the development. In this way, we feel that this application does not meet that standard, and we'll, again, discuss that a little bit further. The previous items generally are well within our standards and could be approved or could recommend approval. That last one, we'll discuss a little bit more. The second question being, is the public interest served by the plating of this subdivision? The public interest for this property is represented in part by the City of Oak Harbor Comprehensive Plan, which designates this as a site for low density residential development. The land use designation for this area is single-family residential, and there is requirement for provision of public services. Staff feels that the application does meet most, both of those criteria. It's a single-family subdivision and a single-family residential land use district, so that's, that's good. That checks that box. And they provide public services through the sewer, water, and other utilities that go along with the subdivision. The comprehensive plan also plays a role in determining if the public interest is met with respect to the applicant's proposal regarding the number and dedication of public streets associated with the subdivision. As noted in the Annexation Agenda Bill, and when we go back to your packet there, I know it's huge, but there is the, there are a number of attachments to that. And one of those attachments talks about the annexation, or not, the annexation application and the staff report or agenda bill that went with that. And one of the items in the agenda bill talked about goal number five from the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, and that states that new neighborhoods annexed into the city should contribute in a positive manner to sustain and enhance the quality of life for all would-be island citizens while promoting a strong sense of place for Oak Harbor. And one of the policies that follows that, policy 5B, says, "Where topography allows, new annexation areas should develop in a traditional lot and block grid pattern that typified early Oak Harbor development and enhances the provision of public facilities and services." Going on to that, that's a long-term goal that the city has had, going back to the 2010 application for annexation, and then also going to our recent 2016, excuse me, 2016 comprehensive plan amendments. Goal two from the 2016 transportation element of the comprehensive plan is called Connected and Efficient, and that refers to our road network and our transportation network. This is something that's been ongoing in our minds for a long time. For the PRD itself, the proposed project utilizes the planned residential development district provisions in Oak Harbor Municipal Code 1931. The purpose of this PRD district is to create a process that promotes diversity and creativity in site design and to protect and enhance natural and community features. The unique aspect of the PRD process is it includes requirements for open space, allows for variation in lot sizes and street standards, requires architectural drawings demonstrating the character of the proposed development, demonstration of superior design components such as landscaping and reduction of impervious surface materials. Pretty much what that's saying is, in exchange for allowing a developer to do smaller lots and smaller setbacks and maybe get a few more homes onto a property than would be typically allowed, we're asking them in return to give us higher design standards essentially, better quality materials on the homes, landscaping, pedestrian amenities, maybe a park or playground, things like that. So that's kind of the trade-off there, and that's the reasoning behind it. So again, taking a look at the map there, you can see that there are open space areas. If I can get the laser to work. Well, that's not going to work. That's not good. This is the one I hit.
Did you hit that one again?
Okay. Thank you. If you can see the tract eight there in the center, essentially at the top side, that is an open space area that includes a playground and some passive and active recreation areas as well as landscaping. There's a pathway that goes through from Upper Maron Drive there that serves as a way for the people that live on Upper Maron Drive to access that. And it's all landscaped, and there's street trees and things like that that wouldn't necessarily be required if they were just asking for the typical 7,200 square foot minimum lot Also included in your packet is the architectural design. The design of the homes are going to be approved with the PRD. So when these homes come in for a building permit, this is what they'll look like. There'll be minor variations with colors and perhaps some materials, but generally what you're going to see is what you're going to get there. And that allows, again, we're asking for that higher level of design quality in exchange for allowing the smaller lots and the closer setbacks. So the PRD review criteria, there are a number of criteria, of course, that come from 1931 170. And just to touch on those briefly, first, it starts off with, "Aside from specific regulations, requirements, or standards proposed to be varied, the project otherwise meets the requirements of the Oak Harbor Municipal Code." Staff concurs with that. With the exception of the street connection, which we'll talk about later, this project meets most of the criteria that we have set forth. There are no known, no known critical areas on the project site, which is also a qualifying criteria. The applicant has submitted house plans that meet the design standards that are set forth in the code. The home plans submitted by the applicant meet the requirement. Pretty much what it's saying there is a garage door wall which faces the street must not be more than one-half of the facade width. So some of these design criteria are shown here. Going into the details and kind of diving into the weeds there, I don't know that we're going to necessarily have time to do that tonight, but just to say that these, these criteria are set forth in the code in 1931, and we feel that they have met that with these architectural designs. They're very nice-looking houses, and they meet the criteria. Continuing forward, no two adjacent buildings may be on the same side of the, or on the same side of the street may have the same front setback. There'll be kind of some variations there. Because the applicant has met requirements A through C above in those criteria, they don't have to meet the setback variation. The applicant may choose to employ such variation, though, if they feel like it will enhance the street view there. That is something that they can do. And then residential buildings are accessed from an alley or through a lot. That's not a requirement. They met, again, A through C of those criteria there in 1931. There are open space criteria, again. We showed you those. There's a tabulation on the bottom portion of this page that shows the different open space areas. They meet all the criteria that are set forth there. There are different requirements for active and passive open space, active being areas where you can play and run around and throw a ball, and passive being maybe just a stand of trees or something along those lines. So finally, on number six, on page nine of your staff report, "The PRD shall comply with all of the following adopted standards." Following through, "The planning and engineering staff has found the application to be substantively in compliance with the above referenced sections." Those are sections from Title 21 also, which is the subdivision code. "Staff will ensure that details such as number and location of specific trees, infrastructure, amenities, and other items will be provided to meet the standards that are set forth in the Oak Harbor Municipal Code." For further review and discussion of the subdivision waivers, we'll talk about those in a few minutes as well. And then moving down to C, where it discusses the comprehensive plan policies, "Staff response to that is that the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan policies regarding housing and is compatible with the surrounding residential uses." The zoning for the site is R1 single-family residential, which corresponds with the comprehensive land use designation. So again, it meets those standards. "The project as design is shown in the PRD drawings is not fully consistent with the comprehensive transportation goals and policies, however." So moving into the subdivision waivers portion of the project, there are a number of them. There are four. So the first one is an administrative waiver. Decisions already been made on this one. This is not for the planning commission or the city council. This is regarding a slope for a small section of Leia Vista Road or Drive that is going to be allowed to be a little bit narrower than what is generally allowed for in the code. This is an administrative waiver or variance that we can approve through a process with our engineering department and planning staff, and we have determined that that is an appropriate use in that area. Subdivision waiver number two is a request to vary from the curve geometry requirements in 1117100, generally just talking about how sharp a curve is, and we have determined that that is an appropriate, an appropriate waiver to approve there. Number three is a subdivision waiver to vary from the maximum street grade requirements at one location on Upper Maron Drive. Because the land on this property is a fairly steep slope, and that particular location is more than a 10% that's allowed in the code without significant grading and recontouring of the earth, we have determined that it is okay for a small portion of that road to be greater than 10%. And then finally, the subdivision waiver number four, which is going to be kind of the, the main discussion here tonight, regarding a request to vary from Oak Harbor Municipal Code 2160100, Sections 1 and 2, to forego the public street connection to Swan Town Avenue. To give you kind of a full history on this, I don't want to go into like too great a detail on it, but we will talk about how this relates to the full project. The Oak Harbor Municipal Code was amended in 2011 in part to emphasize the connectivity of vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle trips within the community. This was done because of a general recognition nationwide and locally that road system layouts that rely on fewer connections serve, excuse me, those road, those that rely on few major roads to serve poorly gridded neighborhoods result in heavy congestion of the major roads during peak hours. As you know, we're on an island. We have one major thoroughfare to get through, and so if we have a situation where there's not a good connections through all of our neighborhoods, we could end up with significant traffic problems on our one major thoroughfare, which is Highway 20. As a result of this problem, there has been a return in transportation design towards designing and providing well-gridded local streets. So you have kind of the traditional neighborhood designs where you have gridded streets, lots of connections, lots of ways to get around, whether you're driving or riding a bike or walking. And that allows pressure relief, essentially is what they're calling it, to allow traffic to move on many different routes rather than having to be concentrated all onto one route. We find that it's vital to the entire community and region... We find that it's vital to the entire community and region that Highway 20 function as a reliable and efficient facility. It's already starting to experience capacity deficiencies at peak travel times, particularly between the intersections of Bixma Drive and Swan Town Avenue. Travel demands are expected to slowly increase in the future, which will put more pressure on the entire transportation network, but primarily on Highway 20. During the season, depending on the season, approximately half of the 20,000 trips per day on SR20 are local trips. In other words, these are people getting to work and going to the grocery store, people who live in Oak Harbor. If we can provide them alternate routes to use, we can reduce that pressure and allow the traffic moving through Oak Harbor to move more efficiently. If this is not a situation where we can control the amount of traffic and make sure that SR20 doesn't fail as far as being able to provide traffic through the city, we're going to have a situation where you're going to have to construct a bypass route or construct new lanes of travel around or through Oak Harbor, which is of course extremely difficult and extremely expensive, especially if you're talking about a bypass route or new roads or things like that, when you have a situation where you have to buy land and get new right-of-way to provide for that. So the review of the waiver itself, the applicant has submitted a subdivision waiver request as outlined in OHMC 2150040 to not connect the plat of Marin Woods to Swan Town Avenue. That code section is shown below. Generally, what you're looking at is there are four criteria there. Because of the size of the tract to be subdivided, they feel that the street should not go through, or because of its topography, or because of condition of nature, or nature of adjoining areas, or D, the existence of unusual physical conditions. And going deeper into that, what it states after that in the code section is that no waiver shall be granted which allows a subdivision, short subdivision, or binding site plan, which is not in the public interest as identified in RCW 5817010. Second being subdivision waivers are a type four review process, so they're coming here to you. Number three, such conditions may be required, which may achieve insofar as practicable. The objectives of the requirements for which the waiver is authorized. And number four, application for adjustment or waiver from the local residential street designs contained in Table 2150-1 shall be processed in accordance with provisions of Oak Harbor Municipal Code. So taking a look at, it's specifically at each of those criteria, the applicant has addressed those four criteria, and so I'll kind of summarize what the applicant has placed in the application there. Number one, being the size of the tract. The applicant states that due to the size of the frontage along Swan Town Avenue, a hardship is created in that no adequate road options can be found to connect the subject property to Swan Town Avenue. According to the waiver, the subject property has 277 feet of street frontage along Swan Town Avenue. Staff disagrees with the applicant's statement that the road frontage is so narrow that it creates a hardship, and we believe that 277 feet should be sufficient to provide a 50-foot right-of-way to access the street there. There are no, the November 6, 2015 preliminary plat that was submitted to us showed a road connection there, and we believe that that demonstrates the ability of the applicant to provide that road connection. The applicant also stated that the most adequate road connection option requires removal of the only house on the property. Removal of the house is not related to inadequate size of the tract, but is to the location of the house on the tract. It is very common with a standard plat that the existing house is removed or relocated due to the challenges of fitting it into both a new subdivision design and a code-compliant lot and street layout. The second criteria refers to the topography. The applicant states that the property's slope is too steep to provide a road meeting standard grades established in the Oak Harbor Municipal Code. The November 6, 2015 application showed that there was a road there. They showed that the design could be met. Additionally, the, this road steepness issue could have been addressed through a subdivision waiver process, that we have approved additional slope to a section of the road further up the hill, and that could have been applied for and probably would have been supported in that situation. We also believe that it's not necessary to eliminate the street connection to address the steep, the steepness of that slope there. Criteria number three, the condition or nature of adjoining areas. The applicant states that the road connection from Marin Woods to Swan Town Avenue should or could not be made due to the obsolete geometrics of the existing intersection at Fairway Lane and Swan Town Avenue. We bring up the foreword from the sixth edition of Ashdoe's Policy on Geometric Design of Highways. The fact, and this is in a quote, "The fact that the new design values are presented herein does not imply the existing streets and highways are unsafe, nor does it mandate the initiation of improvement projects." In other words, just because the street on the other side is not of a sufficient or current design, doesn't mean that they have to fix it. So what they would need to do is their connection to the road would need to meet the current standards, and then the other side of the road would continue as it was. It's like if you were doing a remodel to your house and you were going to go and build an addition onto your house, you would need to meet current codes for that addition. You don't have to go back and retrofit your entire house with two-by-six studs and that sort of thing. The applicant has not identified inherently unsafe condition that will be created within the vicinity of the intersection by connecting the street. Additionally, the city has not indicated to the applicant that they are responsible for addressing existing intersection issues on the other side of the road. So we never told them that they need to do that. The assumption has been that they will connect to Swan Town Road, and we will allow that situation to continue, and if there is a, an opportunity to fix the intersection, then that might be a situation that we can deal with a later time. And finally, criteria number four there, the existence of unusual physical conditions. The applicant states that there are three unusual physical conditions that create a hardship, those being the inadequate intersection of Fairway Lane and Swan Town Avenue, B, the location of the existing home conflicting with the alignment of the road connection to Swan Town, and C, the topography of the slopes approaching Swan Town Avenue. Staff feels that that's a repetition of the previous three criteria there, and so we have the same comments that go forth on that. Regarding, regarding letter B, the location of the existing home, the applicant has proposed that this is a burdensome hardship cost to remove the home from that piece of property. They cite a total cost of $380,000 for removal of that home, and staff makes the following comments regarding those costs. Of that total, $145,000 is attributed to the loss of the existing house. As we noted previously in the staff report, it's not uncommon to remove a house when you're replating a subdivision, or you're plating a subdivision, or you're going in and redeveloping a property. That's fairly typical. Also, an additional $90,000 of the projected burdensome hardship costs is associated with the potential loss for right-of-way. The total number of lots actually realized through the plating process is not determined at this point. They have one lot. Creating a new road through there does not cause a loss of a lot. It creates a situation where they might not be able to create as many lots, but they have one lot now, and they'll have a significant number of more lots when this is, when this plat is created. And then the remaining $145,000 is divided between items typically associated with the cost of street construction. With the exception of perhaps a retaining wall, there is none of the listed items or costs that are unusual in a typical subdivision process. Based on that information that we just presented to you and that was in the staff report, staff does not find that the applicant has met the burden of proof demonstrating that one of the four applicable criteria for subdivision waiver has been met. Further, it's staff's opinion that granting the waiver would not be in the public interest, which would be in direct conflict with Oak Harbor Municipal Code 2150040, number two, which says, "No waiver shall be granted which allows a subdivision, short subdivision, or binding site plan, which is not in the public interest as identified in RCW 5817010." In light of the information and analysis, staff is unable to recommend approval of that requested subdivision waiver. Continuing on with the waiver request, and I don't want to belabor the point too much because I don't want to continue this presentation for too much longer, but we wanted to discuss a little bit about the connectivity of the neighborhood and the number of connections that you have through that neighborhood area. The applicant states that the connectivity of the neighborhood is in line with other neighborhoods in the vicinity as it is now, and that the, providing a new street connection to Swan Town Road will not significantly change that. We believe that the comparison is not fully accurate in its representation of the number of connections in several of the neighborhoods, creating an underrepresentation of the number of connections per home. It does not appear to consider the existing street stubs that will provide future connections when adjacent lands develop. These future street extensions will result in a lower ratio of homes per neighborhood connection. The applicant cited a Lowerland Heller Swan Town neighborhood. The applicant asserts that there are seven access points into this neighborhood. We feel that this is not entirely accurate when that neighborhood is examined closer. The Shannon Forest subdivision should not be considered to be, shall not be considered part of this neighborhood since its connections are very inefficient for neighboring subdivisions to use to access Heller or Swan Town avenues. If you've driven through that area, the streets are very circuitous. It's difficult to get from point A here to point B there going through the Shannon Forest subdivision. It's just not a reasonable way to expect people to go through to get from point A to point B. That drops the number of connections from seven to five. Two of the remaining five are very localized. The three connections that will be utilized by the residents of the Marin Woods subdivision to get to a Collector or Arterial or Thornberry Drive to get to Swan Town Avenue, Putnam Drive to get to Heller Avenue southbound, and Lowerland Drive via Roder Drive to get to Heller Avenue northbound. In the absence of a direct connection to Swan Town Avenue, Marin Woods residents would use the same connections. When considering street connectivity, it's also important to consider the quality of the connectivity. Not all streets serve as well as others. The internal street system referred to as the Lowerland Heller Swan Town neighborhood is a circuitous street network that was constructed under older standards and intended to provide property access rather than efficient transportation. These streets were designed under the old system of doing the curvilinear roads that will provide slow-moving traffic, cul-de-sacs, dead ends, things like that, that people like to have for their homes to access those where there's not a lot of traffic. And it's intentionally difficult to drive through there. Rather than having a gridded street system that we talked about previously that allows for that pressure relief, these neighborhoods, they concentrate all the traffic into the Arterial roads like Heller, like Swan Town. Without a street connection through Marin Woods to Swan Town Avenue, 42 additional homes will rely on Thornberry to access Swan Town Avenue. Most of Thornberry Drive that lies south of Southwest Robertson Drive is a county road with no pedestrian facilities. It also has some existing grade and horizontal curve issues near the connection to the city limits that are not conducive to increased volumes of traffic. To detail that, we provided attachment I in your staff report that had a letter from city staff addressing our position to the applicant, that we believe that that street connection to Swan Town Avenue is required by code and is necessary. So moving away from the subdivision waivers and back into the landscape plan, as we discussed previously, part of a planned residential development, you have to have certain landscaping elements such as environmental amenities or common open space areas, including those active and passive areas. Specifically, the applicant has proposed the following. To have 10% open space is a gross measure of the entire area, so they have the 10% open space. They provided 6% passive, 5% active, for a total of 11%. They meet that requirement. Perimeter landscaping required. We require a 20-foot perimeter landscaping around the perimeter of the subdivision there. You can see that in the dark green. We did not require them to have it on the corner lot there at Robertson and Putnam to allow for those subdivisions kind of merge together without having a hedge essentially of trees in between them. Felt it just made for a more cohesive neighborhood unit there. And then a landscape buffer of 25 feet along Swan Town, there is also, you can see, a stormwater facility at the bottom of that hill there to handle the stormwater that comes off of the streets and the hard surfaces of the subdivision. The details that are shown on this landscape plan are expected to change a little bit. There'll be different numbers of trees and locations for street trees and things like that. We understand that. Things change a little bit, and so we will allow for some design flexibility, but those required elements that are shown in the code will still be a part of the final subdivision approval, and staff will inspect the site before final plan, or final plat approval to ensure that they are included in that final, in that finished project. Land clearing plan. Obviously, the property is forested. The applicant will be required to go through the DNR to get a Class IV General Forest Practice application before any clearing or logging occurs on the site. Transportation concurrency, we touched on very briefly at the beginning, that will be reviewed to determine any potential impact fees to be paid by the applicant before the final plat approval. The SEPA checklist, no appeals were filed, no comments were made on that. That one went without hitch early on in the process. That's something we do to get out of the way, to make sure that there are no comments or appeals or anything before we come to you in case anything has to change. So no further action is required either on the transportation concurrency or the SEPA checklist by the city council or the planning commission. So to bring it all together, review process summary. The Oak Harbor Municipal Code details the processes by which a subdivision is approved. We've already discussed that a little bit. What's going to happen here is you're going to make a recommendation to the city council. The city council will do a closed record review, which means they won't take any new testimony or any new materials that go along with that. They're relying on staff review and the planning commission decision to make a decision on Once they receive that recommendation, the city council will do that closed record review, and then they will make a determination. And the effective approval in this case is detailed in 2120080 in the Oak Harbor Municipal Code. And there are two things there I want to make clear. The applicant may develop construction plans for the proposed improvements based in strict conformance with the approved preliminary plat, street, and utility standards adopted by the city and any special conditions required by the council. And number two, the construction of said improvements are not to begin until all plans have been approved in writing by the city engineer. So in other words, plans are submitted for the review, and the approval must meet the city's adopted standards, because if those are approved, the applicant is authorized to move forward. So if there is an approval recommended tonight, then that moves forward, and that approval is based on the application packet that you have and the information that you have and all the plans that go along with that and the layout and everything. So in conclusion, that's really small types, so I don't expect you to read that one at all. In conclusion, based on the information provided by the applicant and thorough review and analysis conducted through the application process, staff finds that the applicant has sufficiently addressed the requirements of the Oak Harbor Municipal Code regarding the following applications. Number one, the preliminary plat. Number two, the preliminary PRD. Number three, three of the subdivision waivers. Number four, the landscape plan, and number five, the land clearing plan. However, through the thorough review carried out by staff as detailed above, has determined that the following application does not meet the standards and criteria set forth by the Oak Harbor Municipal Code and should be disapproved. The subdivision waiver regarding the connection of the internal subdivision street system to Swan Town Avenue. As has been noted, the project drawings do not depict the code-required street connection to Swan Town Avenue. After careful analysis, staff could not support the applicant's request for a subdivision waiver that would allow the project to be approved without that connection. A revision to the project drawings is necessary. With that in mind, the previously referenced effective approval code section has a role in shaping staff's recommendation on this project. Due to the fact that staff cannot recommend approval of the subdivision waiver regarding the connection to Swan Town Avenue, staff therefore cannot recommend approval of the preliminary plat, PRD, and associated applications. The draft findings of fact provided to the planning commission are appropriate should the commission accept staff's recommendation to disapprove the project. In the event the planning commission recommends approval of the project, the finding of facts will need to be revised. Also, in the event of an approval recommendation, staff has provided a list of conditions of approval that should be attached to the application. And that concludes my address to you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I may actually suggest, Mr. Chairman, that it would be more appropriate for you to open the hearing and then hear from the applicant, and then that way the commission could ask their questions after they've had not benefit of hearing the applicant's presentation and/or any other members of the public who may, may wish to speak.
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and address the folks that would like to come to the podium and state their, their side of the issues.
Intent, I believe the applicant is queued up and ready to present, and I think Mr. Dern is first up for the applicant.
Correct.
First, before I begin, let me extend our condolences to the general island community for the events of last Friday night. Seem to have gotten yourself onto the world stage in a very awful way, and we, I can only empathize a bit with that in that we grew up in a very safe suburb of the city of Chicago and raised our kids there, but still were affected by a school violence incident there, et cetera. We know it takes a long time to sort of get over the initial impact of those kinds of things, and our, our thoughts are with, with your community, so. I am representing the George F. Marin Trust. George and Margaret, George F. and Margaret Marin, with six children, moved to Oak Harbor in nineteen sixty-one. Thank you for queuing the slides, I forgot to done that. George was a career Navy, World War II Korea and Vietnam veteran. Margaret had served in the British Army during World War II. Margaret Marin passed away in nineteen ninety-one. George passed away in two thousand and eight. Both are interred in the Oak Harbor Cemetery. The trust that I represent is equal ownership of interest of the six surviving siblings, which includes six, excuse me, three veterans, Navy, Navy, Army, if anybody's keeping score, Yale-educated lawyer, now deceased, historian, who is the trust executor, and a university administrator who was the senior girl of nineteen seventy, who married someone named Doron from Eastern Washington. I have, I guess I have an official title of development executive, but that's a very overblown thing. I'm simply trying to manage this on behalf of a family of six siblings that came about this, this asset. The house has been owner-occupied, that sits on the property continuously by family members since nineteen sixty-one, so the Marins consider themselves fifty-five-year citizens of Oak Harbor and are still here. Present tonight is George Marin, one of the siblings, who currently is living in the house. Property in the existing house are the only remaining assets of this trust, so this is who we are. Next slide, I'm going this way? Great, got it. We are, we were not the current, the current applicant was not the active participant in the aborted application that was referenced, started in two thousand and fourteen. Staff mentioned that it was Mr. Gentry gave an application. We were passive owners at the time, relying on the active decisions and judgments of the, of the developer, potential buyer of the property who was under contract to purchase that. The three things that sent Mr. Gentry walking were the basin drainage agreement, which is included in your package between pages four eighty-six and five eighty, an intergovernmental agreement that sort of explains how water drains through that entire basin, the city of Oak Harbor reimbursement procedures, which at one point in time raised Mr. Gentry's blood pressure, and other recessionary issues, let's say, away from Marin Woods and away from Oak Harbor. He has opted since then to pursue other issues not in Oak Harbor. By example, we are simply saying that we, this was what we call our first near-death experience, and we have been since then sort of standing in and having to take a more active role in the, in the application, and we are the applicant, we are the subdivider according to your, your legislation. But we are, we are also want to sort of make the point that applicants are a little more fragile in two thousand and sixteen than they were in two thousand and six. They're a little more sensitive to economic concerns and economic impacts, and it does have the, there is the capability of sort of pushing applications too far and requiring too much. And so we will be talking about things that cause undue hardship tonight, and we want you to sort of understand those pieces. Wow, seven hundred and two pages is what lays before you. All sorts of pieces from all over the place. We, we know some of them, we know most of them, we've, we've remembered history on, on a lot of them, and we'll try tonight not so much to focus on what was in your packet, but also equally as important as to what would, was omitted from the package. More specifically, halfway down the, okay, so this is the, there we go. Halfway down the page, the, what we call Gibson Two, the Gibson Traffic Study of December seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, and we have copies that we'll pass out at the appropriate time for the board to consider that, et cetera. Beyond there, we want to go back, and we went back into our archives just to see how far we could get back, and went back to nineteen ninety-eight. This is a drawing of, out of the city archives that we were given at annexation. Here is Highland West. Here is the, the street, and this is in fact a cul-de-sac condition, not connecting to Swan Town Road, date on the property, update on this drawing nineteen ninety-eight. So there have been over the years drawings that show connections and drawings that not show, do not show connections, and we'll try to indicate in the course of our presentation how, how we came to what we freely admit was a sober decision. We were, we were alive, we were awake, and we were in full control of our senses when we made it, and we continue to think that for economic reasons and for impact reasons, it was a, it was a good thing to do, and we'll try to share that. We are encouraged by Ray's presentation tonight that, out of all other measures of how is the project doing, that we seem to be in compliance, we seem to have come up to the standards of plat approval, et cetera, and we have this one remaining issue of street or no street. Here is the, the issue of houses on, this is our SEPA application. The question here was how many housing units would be eliminated? Housing units being torn out in the course of developments is, is so much of an issue that SEPA's questionnaire says, how many, how many are you eliminating? So they treat it along with how many birds are you disturbing, how much wildlife are you disrupting, et cetera. In other words, it's a, it's a, it's a, how, it's a disruptive question as to whether you're taking out a thing. Our answer in the SEPA was none. Previously coordinated with the city to eliminate, to elements in the original concept that would have caused elimination of low-income housing stock were eliminated from the project. So by leaving the house in, by taking the street out, we in fact have preserved a house in consensus with what we believe SEPA to, to ask of us. The other distinction we want to make tonight is we think we have an existing neighborhood. We, we'll get a little more pictures here. This is the, the subject, Lowerland Heller Swan Town neighborhood, and there's a packet in here for each commissioner with that drawing. We have obviously some for the record and some for the audience as well. And we'll get into that issue of how things flow through the neighborhood and, and that type of thing. But we want to understand that we are the last forty-two people in our development to, to build in an existing neighborhood with an existing street condition. We are perfectly happy for the city to pursue policies in new neighborhoods about how to relieve State Road Twenty, et cetera. For obvious reasons, we will, can, hope to convince you that tonight that those things do not apply to the existing neighborhood that we have here, and we'll get into those details a little later. We'll pass over this. But I want to focus on, just by introduction before I turn it over to our two experts that actually have the content, is the economic impact to the city of Oak Harbor of this project. National Association of Home Builders puts together an annual report on the economic impact of actually building homes in a community. They base it on the fact of, of a hundred single-family homes. What is the typical economic benefit to the community includes the jobs creation, what are the impacts to the, to the local economy as far as tax base, et cetera. And for Marin Woods, we can tell you that Phase One is about a seventeen million dollar impact into the city of Oak Harbor. Incomes, eight million, businesses, two-point-seven, wages, five-point-three, taxes to the city and state and county, one-point-five, and the creation or support of a hundred jobs. That's the first impact of economic development of this project. The next impact, excuse me, is what they called a ripple effect, which is another ten-point-four million. Again, a continuation of creating seventy-six more jobs as the first wave of jobs goes and spends their paychecks in the community, et cetera, sort of thing. And then as it all settles down, these forty-two homes create about four-point-seven million dollars' worth of impact or support about thirty-three jobs per year on an ongoing basis from say year three onward, et cetera. So we are on the near side of a single hurdle to, that on the far side creates this economic benefit for the city of Oak Harbor and the Oak Harbor community. We cannot physically move our property to another jurisdiction. We don't want to, and so we have this great opportunity to offer the city of Oak Harbor. I think the other thing we want to paint for you is that we are only the raw land owner. This process that we're talking about, which is twenty-seven million dollars to the community and a hundred and forty jobs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, our appraised value of our land is five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So five-hundred-and-fifty on a twenty-seven million dollar deal. And what that says for us is that we are a, our, our threshold, when we talk about undue burden on the applicant, and we are the subdivider applicant, is nobody else is in partnership with us. This is the six sibling groups pursuing it as a self-promoting, self-promoted exercise, self-funded and self-promoted, that we want you to understand that our base for threshold is five-hundred thousand dollars, half a million dollars, et cetera. So when we talk later on about the impact of things that cost a half a million dollars or cost a million dollars or cost a million-five, it's not there, okay? Who it is there for is the, the infrastructure construction done by Johnson, the home builders done by Waldron, the engineering done by Harmsen, the legal and advisory services in a best-of-market approach, and other small businesses in the Oak Harbor area, many of which seem to recuse themselves tonight and, and will have a role in, in some way of this economic benefit. So let me do this and turn it over to two of our experts. One is John Bissell, who is our code advisor, and the other one is Mike Ryan, who is our project engineer on the project from Harmsen Engineering. And I will come back a little later in the presentation. We are kind of tag-teaming to get you the right subjects and the right experts giving these testimonies. We'll try to move through this quickly. We've got pictures, and we'll take questions as efficiently as we can. Thank you. Where are we going to, John?
Here.
There.
I was going to push the buttons when I got there.
Okay. Mr. Bissell.
I may be flicking around to try and find my slides. Unfortunately, we were all pressed for time, staff and us were pressed for time, and we didn't receive the staff report until late on Friday, so the three of us sat in the office all day preparing. So if our slides are a little out of order, be patient, please. My name's John Bissell. I'm a planner with LSA Engineering. I'm subcontracting to Harmsen Engineering. I'm a little afraid I'm going to beat a horse a little bit that might be almost a dead horse, but staff made a great, fairly lengthy presentation about what the project is and what it's about. The law says the burden of proof is ours, and so I'm going to probably repeat some of what staff has already done, and that way you hear it from our point of view, anyway. I'll skim over some things if it's super redundant, but I'd kind of like you to hear how we're seeing certain parts of this. So there, there may be some redundancy. So, and also, I understand that the city hasn't processed a plat for several years, so this plating process might be new to some of you as we're going through this. So I might oversimplify things that you already know about, so no offense intended if that's the case. So the burden of proof belongs to the applicant. The applicant presents evidence to the city. The city reviews that evidence and makes a, makes a judgment on their part as to whether or not the applicant has borne that burden of proof, making a recommendation to the commission. And the commission's job is to evaluate that evidence and decide whether or not the burden of proof is borne. I make that point because staff has gone through the, the evidence and noting where they believe we have provided adequate evidence or where we have not provided adequate evidence. We believe that we have provided adequate evidence to bear the burden of proof for approval of all counts in front of you, and so, so then it, it lies with you to make the, make the judgment on the burden of proof. Okay. Yes, Rick's neighborhood map is the first slide, so we do have the right slide up first. So this map is here just simply to give an idea of the neighborhood in which this, this project is cited. This neighborhood is often referred to as the Lowerland, Lowerland Heller Swan Town neighborhood because it's bounded by those streets. It's the last undeveloped piece of property within that bound, within the boundaries of those streets. The, the site has a stub road that goes into it from Putnam and a stub road that goes into it from Robinson, and it has about two-hundred-and-seventy feet or so of frontage on Swan Town. Let's see what the next map is. Hey, we're going the right way. This is, this is what we call an original condition sheet in, in surveying. This is just the survey, it shows where the trees are. So the site is a hillside site, slopes on the site, average about seven percent or so. There's pitches of seventeen percent slope on the site. The, these slopes do provide some challenges. The city's code maximum road slope is ten percent, so when you have to traverse a, go, go up a slope that's seventeen percent, when you have a ten percent maximum grade for the road, you end up with some challenges. So we have been addressing those challenges through the design of this project. The site is generally wooded. You can see as it gets down closer to Swan Town Road You can see as it gets down closer to Swan Town Road, which is on your left-hand side of that sheet, the the trees are, there's not as many trees, and that's because that's where there's a single-family residence and yard space and so on. On this map, all these little dots represent a surveyed tree location. I'll be referring back and forth to this landscape plan from time to time. This is the landscape plan, but I like to use it in the presentation because it's very clear what the site looks like, what the developed site is proposed to look like. The site's about 10 and 1/2 acres. The applicant's proposing to divide those 10 and 1/2 acres into 43 lots with two road access points. Stormwater detention will be at the lower part of the project, which is adjacent to Swan Town Road. Water flows downhill, so you, stormwater is always going to be at the, at the bottom end of the, of the project. And the the site access is proposed via the Putnam stub and the Robertson stub. Providing two stub roads provides adequate emergency vehicle access up to, the fire code requires or allows up to 250 lots with two stub roads. We're proposing 43 lots, so clearly, emergency vehicle safety access is met with this design. There was some discussion in the staff's presentation about a map that was shown at the annexation process, and I wanted to discuss this just a little bit. There's, there's a couple of things to talk about with the annexation process map. The first thing to talk about with the annexation process map is that a map was provided for reference only at the annexation process. The site had not yet been surveyed, so when you're designing roads, you got to know what your top, your topography is to figure out where your road's going to go, what roads are going to work, what roads are not going to work. So, this is a two-dimensional representation of an idea of what might happen on the site. This is not an engineered design in any sense of the word. An annexation is not typically dependent on a subdivision design, but sometimes, in many jurisdictions, city councils are interested in seeing what kinds of things could happen on a project when an annexation is going to happen. So, the applicant submitted a map that showed what kind of things could possibly happen. There's no knowledge as to whether or not an access to Swan Town Road could be constructed or whether it would be a good idea to construct an access to Swan Town Road. Furthermore, during the process, there was a lot of back and forth between the property owner's representative at that time, who was drawing the site plans, and city staff. The property owner's representative asked a lot of questions and was looking for a lot of direction about what site design might be like. And, and at one point, the applicant's representative received a response back from staff that said, "Please note that the project is currently in the pre-application process for an annexation application, and any comments staff provides on the design in, at this time are courtesy comments." In other words, it's completely non-binding. The annexation shows a map that does, does, perhaps would have a Swan Town connection. The staff report at the time that was presented to the council discussed the possibility of a Swan Town annexation. However, the ordinance that was passed, which is the law that we have to pay attention to, is silent on a Swan Town annexation. So, we can't place the annexation as an element that tells us that a Swan Town connection is required. It's not, it's not the legal document that gets us there. The only thing we can say is that a, a sample map was presented that showed something that could happen on that site for reference only. Subsequent to the annexation, the property owner, being a property owner not a developer, placed the property for sale to a developer so that a developer might be able to do a subdivision. And Landage Gentry applied for an application with the city to propose a subdivision. Landage Gentry also proposed a connection to Swan Town, but if you look on the left side of the map, you'll see an open space that is not of a sufficient area for a stormwater pond. If you remember the landscape plan we were looking at a little while ago, you see a fairly large green area adjacent to Swan Town, which is the stormwater area. When we look back at the maps that were submitted subsequently, that we don't see that stormwater. The reason we don't see that stormwater pond is that there's an agreement between several parties, including the city and the county, and downstream landowners and landowners in the, in the subject neighborhood, that discuss how stormwater will be handled. And this particular lot is identified for stormwater as what they call in the agreement for rapid release. The point of rapid release is you don't detain stormwater, so the, the stormwater flow releases very quickly and bypasses other water that's flowing more slowly. It's a different way of emptying your stormwater basin. And the agreement said that that's how they were going to do stormwater in that basin. And so, Landage Gentry read that document and expected that no stormwater detention would be, would be required on that application. During that process, that applicant discovered that the county and the city disagreed with that interpretation. And I'm not getting into whether that, which interpretation was right or wrong, just that the landowner, or the, not the landowner, the applicant had one expectation, and the city and the county had a different expectation. This site design is based on the expectation of the applicant that no stormwater detention would be proposed. When the city and the county and the applicant were unable to come to terms on that answer in a time period that worked for that applicant, that applicant said that time period that that resolution is going to take too long for me, the holding costs on this property is enough that I can't afford to wait that long, I'm abandoning this project. And it was based on, on that issue with the stormwater. This is relevant because stormwater takes up area and roads take up area. In this case, the applicant proposed a road but did not propose stormwater. In our case, we proposed no road, but we proposed stormwater. So, each thing takes up area. Okay, so we move on to the, the current map. And so, we proposed an application with, with no connection. Now, staff did say in their presentation that they believe that we thought at one point it was possible to make a connection because citing the annexation map, later citing the map from Landage Gentry. And then subsequently, there was an application made by this applicant, the very first map that was submitted, did show a connection to Swan Town. And so, what's happened with that is that there was a connection shown to Swan Town, and in that connection, when that was shown, staff had some corrections as to the alignment, how that connection would work. And in evaluating the corrections that staff issued to the applicant, the applicant ordered more survey, went out and evaluated the geometry of the intersection of Fairway Lane, Swan Town, and the slopes that are associated with making that connection, and found out that making the corrections that staff asked for would be very, very difficult, and in fact, bringing the road connection in would be very, very difficult. Staff reviewed, or excuse me, the applicant reviewed the, the code, and in reviewing section 216100 states that the street pattern utilized for short subdivisions, subdivisions shall be a grid or modified grid with four or three-way intersections designed at right angles, blocks shall be rectilinear. Staff has interpreted that this code section requires a road connection to Swan Town Road. The applicant did not interpret that code that way. Now, the, the code also gives staff the authority to make code interpretation, so that's fair, but the applicant did not read that code that way. Because it doesn't say that a through connection shall be made. It, what it says is that subdivisions shall be grid or modified grid with four or three-way intersections. So, if you look at our, our application, you see that we have the connections to Putnam and to Robinson, and that that comes in and makes two three-way connections within our site with a road that curves around the other side, making essentially a grid around the other side. As we talked about in, in an earlier slide, this neighborhood shows that the site is the last site to be developed within this neighborhood. So, when you're talking about grids, are we talking about through connections? Are we talking about connectivity for the sake of traffic? Are we talking about a grid that connects just to the specific road, et cetera? It's not super clear. So, we interpret it differently from how staff interpreted the, the connection would be made. But then, staff issued corrections. We went back and forth a couple of times. We wrote to them and explained to them what I just explained to you. We read the code differently, and they wrote back and said, "But we read it this way." And you said, "Okay, then what waiver do we apply for? Because this doesn't work very well." And, and so then subsequently, subsequently to that, we applied for the waiver. It's important to put that in perspective because staff has made the point that we applied for this and therefore it's possible. And those don't necessarily follow. If we look at the, the application with Landage Gentry and we look at where they did stormwater and how we've done stormwater, they're different. If we look at how the intersection works with Fairway Lane and how that connection should work, we start to see that there are a lot of difficulties. So, so I've just downloaded a lot of information to you and skipped back and forth in my, in my notes here, so let me catch myself back up. Okay, so, so before we came back in with a connection, we're going through the process, we, I described the process to you where we had a connection, and then we discovered, wow, this connection is not working very well. So, the very next thing that we did is we wanted to know what our impacts are. We really want to comply with the code. We also don't want to offend the local neighborhood. As I said, we're the last large lot developing in that neighborhood. So, the very first thing we did is we contacted our traffic consultant and ordered a second traffic study. What we wanted to know is what are the impacts going to be if we don't connect this road? Is, are we going to create all sorts of new impacts with the road connected or with the road not connected? So, let's get a traffic trip generation study and find out what the impacts are going to be. Now, you want to hand those up? It's time. So, so the, the, this, this report was omitted in the staff report, so it wouldn't be in your packet. We did submit it to the city with our application. When we omitted the road connection, we also submitted this traffic report. And if it is in your packet and we miss it, I'm sorry, it's a fairly large packet, maybe we missed it. But we didn't see it in there and wanted you to be aware of that. The, the summary of that report, let's see if that made it there. The summary of that report is up here, and
One more.
Hmm?
One more. That's August.
We've got with and without. Okay. So, I can flash back and forth between you, between these two. This is contained in, in your report, and if your eyes are anything like mine, you're not going to read it from there. I'm not going to read it from there. So, but what we find with the study with the connection and the study without the connection is there is no statistical difference. There's very slight difference in the numbers of the impacts at the different intersections, you know, one trip here, one trip there, but those are within the standard deviation error rate. So, so from a statistical standpoint, the impact of the trip generation from this project is identical whether we have the road connection or we don't have the road connection. And this speaks a little bit to some of the comments that staff made about where trips are likely to go from the, from the site. Where trips turn out are most likely to go are, go back to this one. Where trips are most likely to go are out Putnam, straight up whatever that connector road is that I can't read.
First.
Thank you. And connect to Lowerland and go out Lowerland. Really, that's, most people are either going to go downtown, but by and large, most people are going north to the, the base. That's just where people go. So, if you add a connection to the south side, we're not really going to be sending any more trips out the south side. If we, and, and if we do send some more trips out the south side, maybe we get a couple more trips in from Fair Lane and, or Fairway, and it balances. So, so, from an impact standpoint of what's generated by this project, and that, and that's a key point that I'll get to in a second, but what's generated by this project, the impacts that are created by this project are that there's no difference whether we make this connection or we don't make this connection. It should be noted, however, that there are people in the neighborhood, and there was an email that was read into the record at the very beginning, who will feel that there is a greater impact with the connection as opposed to without, because with the connection, you'll have cut-through traffic. And there's a perception, whether it's right or wrong, there's a perception with cut-through traffic that if I'm driving in my neighborhood, I care about my neighborhood, I'm going to look out for kids. If I'm cutting through the neighborhood, that's not my neighborhood, and I'm going to drive like a maniac. I don't know that that's true, but there's certainly a neighborhood perception of the truth of that. And, and so from a neighborhood standpoint, where we see that our impacts are, are the same without, with and without, the neighborhood perception is that the regional impact is better without.
Can I bring up number seven also? It's not, relationship, no relationship to state route.
Oh, well, I was going to get to that later. But as long as it's up here, we can look at the statistics. Later in my presentation, I was going to talk about, because staff had it later in theirs, about the relationship between the overall trip generation and State Route 20 and, and the idea that this neighborhood could work as a relief valve for State Route 20. And there's, there's a couple of problems with that. The first problem is staff doesn't have any studies that validate that point of view. That point of view is based on a feeling of what trips are likely to do. This study did look at our impacts of State Route 20, whether or not any vehicles from State Route 20 from, are affected by our project in any way. So, looking at it the other way, right? There's, there's where we're dispersing and there's what disperses towards us. And according to this study, we have zero impact on State Route 20, so it's, it's a non-issue. All right. okay, so, so, on the burden of proof, we need to talk about project compliance. I believe that, that we have proven compliance, and it's in the record with the PRD code, the subdivision code, the landscape plan, various, various subdivision design waivers, and staff concurs with that analysis. And so, since staff concurs with that, they recommended approval, and they've already gone over the details of that with you, I think we can gloss over that unless you have any questions about the compliance with those particular issues. So, I'm going to move on to the point of contention that staff spent a lot of time on, now I'm going to spend a lot of time on it, and that's the, the waiver for the connectivity to the, to Swan Town. So, staff's interpretation was that the, the code section I spoke of earlier requires a connection to Swan Town. And if we, if we believe that a connection to Swan Town is inappropriate, that it's something we're unable to do or creates an undue hardship, that we need to use the waiver process. that we need to use the waiver process. And, and the waiver process is on, oh, in your packet on page thirty-three. Yeah. Subdivision waivers, attachments. Ah, here we go. Yes, it's on page thirty-four in your packet. And on page thirty-five, the exact code language is listed with the exact requirements that need to be met. Now, I want to bring your attention to a couple of things as I go through this, just, just to start. The first thing is that we have to prove that it creates a hardship. And then it's a little bit out of order because we're saying it, it creates a hardship and then we have to talk about each of the criteria. So we're going to talk about the hardship first. I'm going to have Rick come up and, and talk about what the analysis is for the hardship. But I want you to note when we look at, at criteria A, B, C, and D, that at the end of line A, it says or. At the end of line B, it says or. At the end of line C, it says or. What that means is that we need to prove that only one of those criteria is met in order for the waiver to be granted. We don't have to prove all four criteria are met. I, I believe that we have met all four criteria. Staff has given a presentation as to why we don't meet all four criteria. I'm going to go over each one. But we only need to meet one of them. And if I'm going through them and you say, boy, I'm not really sure about that one or that one, but man, I really like that third one or whatever it is. We only have to meet one of them. And, and that's what the criteria says. And then, and then there are several more criteria underneath there that three, four, and five are instructive but not criteria. Two counts as a criteria. And two basically says that it has to be in the public interest. We can't be creating a, a, a public nuisance and so on. And staff has been clear to say that they really don't think we meet that one. And I really think we do meet that one and I'll go through as to why. So we're going to start with Rick coming up, talking about some of the particular hardships. Are you ready for that?
Sure.
And then I will come back and talk about the, how we meet the criteria.
So let me simply preface this with, with the introduction that professionally I advise people on projects, on the costs, on the schedules, on the economics of projects, et cetera. And many times we're spent on how to put together an estimate at, at an early point in a project. What does that involve, et cetera? And so the, the documents we want to show you is this X exhibit E. Let's get you a, let's get you a version of that that's a little more. Well, let's stay there for a minute. This is an exhibit E that's in your documents on, on the waiver section. I'll have to look it up, et cetera. We totaled up nine elements of what does it cost to put a street in? And obviously, when we take the position that if there is no justification for the street, then the entire cost of putting the street in and all of its associated engineering design and right-of-way loss, et cetera, is the, is the, is the burden. When we do that, we get a, we get a, an appraised value of the house confirmed. Footnote on the first one, confirmed of a hundred and forty-five thousand. The potential value of the land underneath, the, underneath the house that becomes right-of-way for the property. Now, we're not going to get into whether that's called Lot One or not called Lot One. The point here is that it moves from inventory that can be sold as revenue-producing land to a home builder and moves into inventory of land that is sitting under a non-revenue-creating street. And that appraised value is ninety thousand dollars. Onto that, we asked Corey Johnson to put together a cost of simply doing a vanilla street. And Corey came up with this number of sixty thousand dollars. Rough grading for that street is the next line down from that. The street, because of elevation changes, has retaining walls in certain places. At least it did when we ran the, the, the math the first time. There, there was discussions that that street, if it were located far to the, to the property line with, with the Henman family next door, that there would need to be an easement, a maintenance easement made with the Henman family to maintain that retaining wall that was there on the street, et cetera, sort of thing. And so we have here as lines of, of a retaining wall, the engineering and management associated with that, taking a ten percent of the costs above, the maintenance agreement formulation, the loss of, of mature trees in a contingency value, and we get three eighty. Now, if that street does not, we, the, the fine print at the bottom in, in your document before you is, it says down there in notes E and F that, John, do you remember where this one is? In the seven hundred.
Excuse me, can you give me the page number?
Yeah, I was just going to ask. What, what, what's our page number on this document? I can find it. Let's, let's get you the. Let's get it back to our table of contents here. We should be under waivers, subdivision waiver application. It is in the third portion of your documents between six forty-five and six seventy-eight. So I would guess at around six seventy-eight, six seventy-seven is about where this thing should be in the deck.
Exactly on page six seventy-seven.
There we go. Six seventy-seven is the answer. Thank you, Steve. Okay, so, um, let me go to there. Six seventy-seven. So there's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the footnotes at the bottom tell you how each of those numbers were. They were, that there was a third-party appraisal involved, an estimate from a contractor, et cetera, how we arranged these numbers, what their sources were. And more importantly, we, we kind of summarized in footnotes at the bottom of that page, E and F, and said, if the potential road that, that we're proposing not to put in, if it were to be put in, in a manner that would go through the existing house and up, up the existing driveway and through the existing house, that the full impact of the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars would be felt if it were to be located in the middle of the property or to the, to the right of the property. And we'll bring up Mike Ryan from the engineering here next to talk about the location of this street and what works and doesn't work. Spoil alert, none of them work. And so this is the three eighty that we have, we have been using. Now, to that, we learned a piece of new information which is in, in the staff report is that city has made a statement in there that perhaps we have not yet, I believe the phrase is, we've not yet informed the applicant that it's your responsibility to fix the existing fairway lane. And so we do have several occasions where the indications are that we need to fix the driveway with the Henmans next door. We need to put in traffic calming. These are references along the left-hand side of this slide. Traffic calming measures on the streets, et cetera. So we have additional expenses beyond the three eighty that, that, that we already know exist and an undefined box. And for the private investor or for the, the limited source funding, unknowns are the worst possible thing. We don't know whether this is a half a million or a million, a full intersection, a million to a million seven, et cetera. So uncertainty associated with our ultimate responsibility for the fairway lane intersection is, is an add-on to that number. And then again, the add-on of the traffic calming, et cetera. So we have a number that is, that is above three hundred and eighty. I will not, I was warned this afternoon not to use hyperbole. That's a good observation. It's larger than three eighty. Now, remember the story to begin with when we told you that the land appraised at five fifty. So your footnote at the bottom says clearly that this is a, this is between forty and sixty percent of the appraised value of the land as a potential surcharge. And forty to sixty percent for us is a definition of undue burden. Good enough? Okay.
I'll find it. I know where I am in my presentation and I made notes about what slide it was. All right. So bear with me while we, we move back to the presentation. Maybe we're on, oops. Maybe we're on that one. Oh, this is Rick's slide that you, okay. Yeah, so we're on that one. All right. I wanted to get on the record that though Rick is a family member of the, the Maron family, he's also qualified as an expert witness to talk about financial aspects of property development. So just wanted to get that on the record. That's why I, I had him come up at the beginning because he's the property owner. I want to come that, that time because he's the expert witness for, for that particular thing. All right. So we've gone through the, the criteria, what the, what the criteria is there for. And, um, so now I'm going to go through the criteria one by one. So the first criteria says, because of the size of the tract, to be subdivided. So staff made a comment that I think probably looking at the site might seem obvious. And that comment is that we have two hundred and seventy-something feet of frontage on Swan Town. We have about ten and a half acres of site. How can the size of the site be a problem for sticking a fifty-foot road in there? And that comes down to how, how Fair Lane Road works and intersects with Swan Town, which should be this one. So. I'm hoping you can see this well. Because what we have here is an intersection showing Fair Lane Road intersecting with Swan Town. And what we see is that Fair Lane Road intersects at a fairly sharp angle. Now, the Ashto standards, which are the, the highway standards that are the basis for the City of Oak Harbor standards and for the standards of almost every road development standards, tell you that you got to try and get the road to connect at about ninety degrees. And you're allowed to deviate from that if you need to by up to about fifteen degrees. And this is deviating a ton. This is forty-three degrees off, something like that. It's, it's, would generally be considered an unsafe condition. Let's see if I can make this light work without causing problems. All right. So it looks to me like it's better to point the light for the commissioners on the board over Steve's head, but I'm afraid I'm going to zap Steve. Is this going to work? Okay. All right. So. There. All right. So here's the intersection and right there is the driveway for the, the house that's on site. So this is where our road has to come through. That doesn't line up exactly right. So, so what do we do to line it up? Well, we could try and bring it over here to try and line it up. But that doesn't line up. That lines up maybe with the right-turn lane, but not with the lane right across. And so that doesn't really work. Both of those options require moving a house. So maybe another option, and I wonder if we have these up here. We've got these different options shown. So maybe an option here might be that we try and bring the connection way over on the side of our property. That, that's as far away from the access of, of this Fair Lane Road as we can get. Yet that creates a problem because the separation then would not be enough. That would create a hazard because you'd have a, a separation that's too close and you'd end up with cars running into each other trying to figure out how to negotiate that. So that, that doesn't work. Now, the reason size is an issue is this between the dot here and the dot there. That's our frontage. If we had frontage going down to here, we could take this road and bring it in here and we would have no problem because we could bring it in right here. There's a crest of a hill clear over here. So if we brought it in farther away, then say over here, we'd have a sight distance problem. A sight distance problem, meaning you can't see far enough when you're sitting in your car to make the turn. But if we were bringing it in over here where I have the, have the dot now, we don't have a sight distance problem and we have enough separation. The problem is that's not our property. We can't get there. That's a developed house that's not ours. So we're limited. We're limited by the size right here and we're limited by what's across the street. So, so the best approach is right here, but this good, this best approach is a lousy approach. And we're going to get to why that's a lousy approach later. So size is an issue because we don't have enough room to solve the existing problem. The criteria asks is size an issue? Size is an issue for the reasons that I described. We looked at a different option of coming in, same thing with the, the size approach. If we tried to curve it in and make it come directly in the same alignment as, as Fair Lane, alls we're doing is making the problems that Fair Lane creates worse because then we have two roads that are coming in at an angle. And there really isn't a good way to solve that problem from a safety standpoint without signalization. We'd really like to not have to put a signal light there. So that's, that's kind of a concern with that. So those are kind of the options we looked at. And that's where we get to the, the criteria that size of the, of the property is a problem. And this would be the, the act that, if we came straight in. So when we come straight in, then we, then we start talking about topography. Move on to the next criteria. Is topography a problem? And as staff said, we said it was a problem because our access would have to be more than ten percent. Now, to go into a little bit more detail, the, the slope is enough on, on here that, on here, on the access road that we would put in, that it would have to be greater than ten percent. But also the landing at, at the intersection would have to be smaller than standards require. You know, when you're driving your car and you come down a hill and you come to an intersection in a road, the, the road comes down and tries to flatten out right before that road. That's a landing. If it doesn't flatten out, you have problems with runaway vehicles. You have problems with being able to make the maneuver in, in a safe fashion. So we would have trouble making the landing work. So we'd be over ten percent and we'd have trouble making the landing work. Now, staff says about that, that they, they could, they didn't say would. They said could, issue a waiver. And they're limited in what they can say, really. Because they can't say we will issue a waiver until they see the criteria and the application for a waiver. So the answer is we could, which the applicant, again, uncertainty is our biggest fear as an applicant. Always uncertainty is our biggest fear. So the applicant reads, we could as maybe. That may not be how staff intends it, but that's always how an applicant is going to read. We could issue a waiver. But that's almost irrelevant because the criteria is asking, is there a topographical condition that creates a hardship? We have to exceed the topography, the, the maximum slope allowed with the topography and we can't make a landing work. So the answer to the question is yes. There's a topographical issue that creates a hardship. Staff's response is, well, maybe there is, but we'd give you a waiver or we might be able to give you a waiver. That's essentially saying, yes, the condition exists. And the code is not asking, can staff come up with a mitigation for the problems? The code is asking, does the problem exist? The answer to that question is yes, the problem exists. And that's all we're looking for is, does the problem exist that creates the hardship? Okay, so we're moving on to the nature. So we're moving on to the nature of adjoining areas. And... That is not where I wanted to go. Okay. All right. So on this slide, on this slide, what we have, and this may be very difficult to read, but in this column right here, we have ten different things that are wrong with the intersection. And I'm going to go through them, just each one, just to talk about what these things are. All right. So the fairway lane at the intersection, at the stop bar of fairway lane, so that's right there, where Fairlane, fairway lane, that's hard to say, where fairway lane intersects right there, the stop bar slope is thirteen percent. Maximum slope you're supposed to do there is two percent. The purpose of that is to keep the car fairly level, so you can look up and down the road. But instead, a car comes to that intersection with its nose pointing up, the driver leaning way back in his seat, and unable to see down the road very well. So that's the first thing. That's at the stop bar for the left turn. The intersection is fairly wide, where it has a left-turn lane right there and a right-turn lane that is way over here, because they're trying to solve the angle problem. So way over here, the right-turn lane is also at thirteen percent. That's number two. Number three, fairway lane to Swan Town Road, left turn has inadequate sight distance to the left. So if you pull up here and you look out this way, you can't see cars coming. The reason for that is this shaded area right there is an area of where it's not right-of-way, where there's cars parked, there's a tree that's on private property, things you can't see past. And at the same time, the car driver sitting here is down very, very low. So that's a problem. In fact, Michael Ryan, the engineer, and I went out there to take measurements one day, and we're standing out there, taking some photographs and taking some measurements, and we weren't, by the way, we weren't the hazard. We were out of the way. But while we were there, a car pulled up to make a right turn at Fairlane, to make a right turn onto Swan Town, looked down, did not see the cargo panel van that was coming down. I saw the cargo panel van where I was standing, but the car driver couldn't see that. The car driver pulled out, the cargo panel van probably was speeding, and ended up having to go into the opposite lane to avoid a collision. The only reason a collision was avoided there is because the traffic volume is low enough, there wasn't a car coming the other direction. But that kind of thing probably happens every single day, because that sight distance right there, looking up this way, is inadequate. The next one, Fairlane, fairway lane to Swan Town Road, right turn has inadequate sight distance to the left. So whether you're turning right or whether you're turning left, whichever lane you're in, either way, you're looking down this way, you're looking down this way, you're gonna make a left, you're gonna make a right, you're sitting here, you can't see what's coming. That's a problem with that road. Number five, forty-three degree intersection angle. Number six, short radius curve. A short radius curve is for the left-turn lane. What that means is that the cars come up, and you're supposed to have a big enough radius that you can get up, and your car is stacked pointing straight. But this one turns right as it gets to the stop bar. So it's called a short radius turn. So it puts the car in an awkward position, and it gives problems if there's any stacking in that left-turn lane. Location of the golf course, parking access from fairway lane is right there. So you've got cars coming up to make the right turn with limited sight distance, and an access point coming in from the golf course parking lot right there. That would not be permitted under any standard today. That creates a hazard for both the cars using fairway lane and also the cars in the parking lot. Next one is a six percent crown slope on Swan Town Road. So does everybody know what a crown slope is? Yes? No? Everybody knows what a crown slope is? Okay. So the maximum crown slope is supposed to be two percent. So a six percent crown slope, so where your road section view should be like that, it's like that. It's all pointy. And that causes a lot of different problems. That causes problems with people, if we were to bring an intersection in here, people trying to see across the road, they're already down low, right, because they've got such a steep slope right there, and then you've got this six percent crown slope trying to get across to be able to see if we were to put a road right there. So that creates all sorts of problems. It also creates structural, construction problems that Michael Ryan will talk about in a little bit, about how do you bring a new road in and connect to a six percent crown slope? It creates a problem. You end up having to maybe fix that crown slope. And then, and then an area where city staff has been reluctant to give waivers, and for probably good reason, because of the federal legislation, which is to ADA compliance. And we'll just say that there is nothing about this intersection that shows ADA compliance. You can't have more than two percent slope in the road, you can't have more than a two percent cross slope. The list goes on. There's no element of this intersection that complies with ADA currently, and it doesn't comply dramatically. And then the last one that we have listed here is right there where I've got the dot on the map. That's a constructed part of the roadway, but it's not in the right-of-way. The city or the county, I guess that's probably county right there, doesn't own the property. They went out and built something out there, but they didn't acquire the property, which is kind of problematic. And it particularly poses problems if anybody needs to go and take corrective action on that intersection. So that's kind of the list, and staff's response to these concerns is to say that, quoting, "The applicant's perspective is that all geometrics of the existing intersection must be brought up to current design recommendations." We actually didn't say that anywhere in our application, that our perspective is that all must be brought up to current design standards. We recognize the perspective that staff presented when they quoted the preamble section in Ashto that says, you know, these are kind of guidelines, and we expect there's going to be waivers. And that's within a certain bounds of safety. You know, when you're looking at an intersection that, you know, maybe, maybe the problem is only that the slope on fairway lane is too steep. Or maybe the problem is only that it doesn't come in at a right angle, or something, right? But what we have is a preponderance of problems, and each one of these problems is a legitimate problem worthy of concern that shows us that this intersection can't function properly. And when you have an intersection that can't function properly, it doesn't make sense to suggest that adding another leg to that intersection would be a good idea. That seems to be a step away from the public interest, to say that this is a good idea to add a new leg to an already poorly functioning intersection. That's our point of view on it. And so if you want to add another leg to it, you need to have really, really strong reasons. You need to be really solving some problem that currently exists, that you're really worried about, that outweighs these other problems. And so, so we're going to go into that in a minute, which is to go into the issue of the public, the public need or the public good that is required in that criteria number two. But we're particularly concerned about something here, and this is something that Michael Ryan, the engineer, and I have talked quite a bit about, and he's going to come up and talk to you about some of his issues. But the reason Michael Ryan and I have talked about this is that in Washington State, to design a project, you need to be a licensed engineer. You have to have a stamp, and you have certain code of ethics that you have to abide by, and with that comes an awful lot of liability. So Michael Ryan and I used to both be principals at a firm called HBA Design Group, which was a casualty of the economic downturn, as many firms were. But as we were principals of that firm, one day I got a call from some attorneys. And what had happened is a kid had gotten run over by a school bus in the Marysville School District, which is an awful thing. And there was, of course, a lawsuit related to that. And named parties in the lawsuit were Snohomish County, because it happened on a Snohomish County street, and the Marysville School District, because they were operating the school bus. The attorneys called us to, and I was the principal who took the call. They called us to determine whether or not we should also be named, and they had some questions. They wanted to decide whether or not we should be deposed on this. And the questions they wanted to know were, did we ask for any deviations on this intersection? Did we create any of the designs outside of standard? The answer was no, it was a standard intersection. And since it was a standard intersection, and we followed the standards, and we followed the county's instructions, we were not named in the lawsuit. And then they went on to talk to the county. And I know a lot of the people at the county, and I was curious at the outcome of this. So I called up the guys who they ended up talking to over there. And the questions that were asked of the county folks were, did you instruct the applicant to create any designs outside of standard? And did you give any deviations on this application? And were your standards based on Ashto or some other similar well-vetted national standard? Most city standards are based on Ashto or complete streets or some national well-vetted standards. City of Oak Harbor is based on Ashto, and most are. Snohomish County answered affirmatively, yes, we designed it per standard, and our standards are based on Ashto, and they were dismissed from the lawsuit. And the point there is that when you're a licensed engineer and you're stepping into a poorly designed intersection, right now, this intersection does not have a crash history. In a long study period, it has just one crash. And that's because the vehicle volumes are low. It's not because the intersection is safe. The intersection is made safe like the incident I described to you when I was standing out there. A vehicle didn't see the other vehicle, he pulled into the other lane, and there wasn't another vehicle coming the other way. That did not result in a collision, because the traffic volume was low enough, it didn't result in a collision. If we add a leg to this, to this spot right here, and a collision does result in this, the attorneys are going to be asking those same questions. But the questions that the answers are going to get are going to be different from the answers that were asked in the case I described to you in Snohomish County. And that's an issue that is not only concerning from a public good standpoint, do we want to propose an intersection that could create these kinds of liability problems? But it's also an issue from a licensed engineer's standpoint. If you have an oath to do no harm and so on, how much liability is a civil engineer taking when he designs this thing, because the city tells him, this is the way this needs to go? So I wanted to get that story across as far as discussing what the hardship really is and where we see this impact, and why we see this surrounding area as an important hardship. But with that, the city has talked about that they will let us design, they've implied, they haven't said they will give us a waiver from designing outside of the right-of-way, but they've implied that we will be able to design right up to the roadway and not be able to design further. And I want Michael Ryan to come up and talk about the thought process from a design engineer's standpoint about what he sees is going to happen if he has to try and make a road connect to that. And then when he's done, I'll come up and finish my presentation.
Let me take a break. Yeah, we could. Can we take like a ten-minute break?
Sure.
Just so we can collect and...
Thanks.
Kind of have some coffee.
Thank you.
We're ready. We're ready. How would I do it going? Sooner the better.
I didn't sign up for the picture.
Yeah. I didn't sign up.
I feel sorry for you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, gosh, he did.
You can't do nothing, you can't do anything.
Early on, she could have got someone, because she knew what was gonna be worse.
She's in there watching Oprah or something.
Pretty rancid.
Behave yourself now, kind of, that's a grand.
We have it pretty good.
I think you have a package. See if that's the thing on point nine. Yes, that's our missing slide, so we'll be talking about your package instead of the slide.
Yeah, more trees.
Okay. Is everybody back in the room? Everybody? I'd like to call the meeting to order again.
Okay. Well, thank you, folks. My name is Michael Ryan. I'm one of the principal engineers at HBA Design Group as well, at Harmsen, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the plans here. When John was going through these documents, we were noting a bunch of information here. We've got, the city was talking about perhaps allowing its waivers for all these different things. Earlier, Ray brought up the discussion, say, you know, adding on to a house and not having to do a bunch of extra work. Well, if we've ever done like a kitchen remodel, you buy the fancy sink down at the Home Depot, and the next thing you know, this pipe's busted, and you've got a ticket in the drywall, and things just have a tendency to snowball. As a licensed engineer, I have to look at this thing and say, well, fairway point, as it currently sits, we've demonstrated that it's substandard in a number of ways. We did not demonstrate that it's unsafe. We demonstrated it's substandard. If we had a fourth connection to it or very, very near it, I've got to consider all that other stuff, and it gets very, very interesting. So let's walk through some of these things. Let's go, let's talk about pond to start, let's move back up where we had our... Okay. So, among other things, forget the laser that's blinding poor Steve here. Okay. So, among other things, the topography has been described here. We've got a fairly aggressive hillside on the right side of the drawing, which is uphill, and then down on Swan Town is the lower part of our property. And this large green space here is a pond. The pond's about an acre foot, which is a whole bunch of water. As we start to consider other connections and connectivities down here, the space for the stormwater pond gets more complicated. We can't really go uphill with it. We can dig into the hillside further, but we can't really go uphill with it. So at some point in time, I've got walls around this right now on two sides that are in the neighborhood of fifteen feet tall. And we start creeping up the hillside here, we get into twenty, twenty-five feet very, very quickly to get the same amount of water stored. As I start to add yet additional hardscape for this roadway and stuff, the amount of storage gets that much bigger. And to give you an idea what this looks like, this is enough water, if I imagine a box, eleven school buses big...
We walk on sidewalks all the time that are 2% and we think they're flat. It's not a big deal. As we get across the crown down towards Fairway, it approaches 6%, which for a nice smooth transition, it's a nice number, but as a stop bar, it's not real good. Stop bars, we like to have at 2%, maybe 3%. Just for giggles, if you park in a parking lot at 4%, car doors start to get kind of heavy. At 6%, if you stop on icy conditions, you have a hard time starting again. The grade out here at the stop bar coming up Fairway to stop at Swan Town ranges from 10% on the center stripe here over to 15% as you cross the right turn line. 15%. That's tough to start on in wet conditions, not just ice. We don't have a lot of ice here. We do have wet. And that's pretty steep. So if I put a connection anywhere down here, I lost my button. If I put a connection down here someplace, even if the city says, well, maybe we don't need to consider these things, yeah, we have to look at some of that stuff and how do we deal with it. And all the subdivision work I've done, I've written a lot of deviations, probably, I don't know, 30, 40 deviations, waivers, exceptions to these sorts of rules. And we're looking at this neighborhood right here, at this connections complex, we're looking at probably 15-ish type of exceptions to consider to get all these different things to work. So the topography is a little bit interesting here. It gets to the point, and we start looking, and go backwards on my slides here. Bear with me, we're jumping around the deck quite a bit. Okay. So as we started looking through these various slides, John pointed out quite a few elements on here. Again, if we put this, like the split T kind of concept, we have to look at, the stormwater facility would get shoved further up the hill, those walls get really, really big, the facility gets skinnier left to right, it gets much longer down the page, and those walls get, like I said, very, very, very tall. Or we start looking at a vault. Again, the vault, we put a vault in here that'll hold this much water would be, like I said, a box that'll hold roughly 11 school buses. So at about $10 to $15 a cubic foot for storage for a vault right now, the small-sized vault here would be just under half a million bucks. So if we put a connection down here, the stormwater gets a lot more complicated, the vault gets a lot more expensive. Mr. Rick over here, Mr. Duran, was talking about the addition of the road here, 380,000 plus. We can talk about a vault, we can talk about some other things, and it starts to get really, really expensive for a handful of cars, 14 peak-hour traffic cars that come into this facility now and in the future. If we do not have a connection down here, all these inadequacies here in the flow of traffic, these remain pretty much as they are right now. It doesn't become a real big deal. If we add a fourth connection, those things have to be considered to some degree, and either we get exceptions for them, never mind basically, or we start to address them. We also talked about traffic signals, which cure all sorts of ills. If we signalize this intersection, we could make up for all sorts of things here like poor sight distance, sort of. We could make up all sorts of things, we could introduce all sorts of things that traffic light would help solve at a cost of about half a million dollars that the city would have to pay for at some point and maintain in perpetuity, forever. I can't say that word. So we're looking at additional connectivity here for cars, mind you, not for bikes, not for people, not for utilities, this is just for cars. The additional cost is going to take not only the house and all the stuff that Mr. Duran spoke about, probably get into a vault situation, about half a million more, probably get into a signal at some point, another half a million, give or take, for about those 14 cars. It starts to get really interesting very, very quickly.
Mike says, "Real interesting."
I'm sorry, could we have you up on the mic?
Yes. I've been known to interrupt a lot, but I just want to clarify, when Mike says, "Very interesting," very quickly, I've learned to assume that means very expensive, very quickly, or very difficult, very quickly.
True. Sorry. Kind of general, that's true. So kind of coming back to the whole PE thing, my license, when I'm looking at adding any connectivity down here, I've got to say, well, my license says, among other things, I've got to look out for the health, safety, welfare, the people, public safety, that sort of stuff. And to add a connection down here exacerbates all of these downstation situations that had to be mitigated or excused or something. So someone's got to pay attention to that, puts a liability question up there, and I have a very hard time saying in good faith, can I stamp such a design? During the annexation documents, I won't go flipping through the deck again, but during the annexation documents, you might recall, this was a T-intersection, Fairway wasn't even shown. Those are all three-legged intersections. Fairway's been there forever. It was never shown on those other documents. We haven't, until just recently, we really haven't looked at the engineering implications of what Fairway is currently doing, let alone how a Swan Town connection from this project interacts with the Fairway connection. And I start to dig into it, and we spent a considerable chunk of money trying to do that, and it's expensive. It's got a whole bunch of substandard things. I've got a list here of about 14 substandard things that, some of them are not a big deal, some of them a little bit of a big deal, but 14, at some point, we have to say, well, how much weird stuff do we really want to tolerate? How many excuses, how many exceptions do we really want to put into this? And I think that's from a life safety point of view, from my license as a PE point of view, those things become kind of serious questions to ask. So there's some of those things. What's that? Yes, I think, I can be around for more technical questions later on if you like, but I think that's probably my pitch. So if you've got more questions for me, I'll be here for a while, I'll get off the mic and...
Did you guys indicate the red on each of these slides?
Say again? Oh. The red dots on the, okay, so, beg your pardon, so on each of these slides, we talked about, on the left side, we've got the things that are substandard. And on the right side, we have things that would remedy those substandard elements. Whether you have to do these or don't do these, we can go through every single one and talk about it, but again, in aggregate, to put another connection down here, we have to look at all the stuff and say, well, does this get interesting or doesn't it get interesting? Do we have to do this at what expense, for what benefit, and so forth? ADA, we can talk ADA real quickly. The ADA rules are going nuts quickly. There's a whole stack of documents, they all contradict each other. And here, we've got one set for things within the right-of-way. We get outside the right-of-way, we get into different sorts of rules, a lot of which have to do with crossfall and grade and things like that. If we start putting intersections out in here and have to then go on and work with ADA compliance, again, we have, I lost my button. We have the 6% crown here, which is out of compliance for a crosswalk. We have the 15% crossfall over here, which is way out of compliance for the crosswalk. So either we get exceptions for all those things or don't do them, or we start to tinker with this stuff and just like putting this kitchen sink together, we take this pipe and touch that drywall pretty soon, or way back here, trying to regrade this thing and get up and get an ADA crossfall that works, ADA grades at work, and it just goes on and on and on. Let me go back to one other document real quick, our landscape plan. Okay, landscape plan. We're talking about connectivity to the rest of society here. We've got some interesting points here. We show the roadway connectivity going to Robertson on the south end of downhill side and Putnam on the top side. What we haven't talked about yet is we have a utility corridor. Utilities can come off of Swan Town. We've got a utility corridor coming right along the lower area, so we've got water, sewer, gas, storm drain coming right down through there. On the far side, sorry about the jiggle, guys. On the far side, we have another corridor, right now we have a pedestrian path, which also overlays utility corridor for additional services, tilth and what have you. We have an ADA-compliant path that gets down there. So with this connectivity as shown, we have no car connection to Swan Town, but we have pedestrian, bicycle, ADA-compliance, utilities, everything but cars. So we have a fairly decent connectivity from our complex to Swan Town for utilities, pedestrians, bicycles, and so on. Is that it for me? Okay, I'll be around for additional questions if you have them. I'll turn the microphone back to Mr. Bissell.
Okay, I'm going to try and wrap up here. The takeaways I want you to get from Michael's testimony are putting together with what Rick said about the approximately $380,000 of expense, and when Rick said, "That's the minimum, we think that there's probably more, but we don't know what it is." And what Michael's talking about is accessing that road is going to cost something that we don't know what it is, that's dipped more than what Rick was talking about. That's kind of what I want you to get out of that, is there's a lot of stuff going on. Every time you heard Michael say, "Well, make something interesting here," what he's saying is, wow, I don't know how we're going to make that work, and it's going to snowball into another big thing. And that's the takeaway I want you to get from that. When staff said earlier, just to repeat what Michael said, when staff said earlier that if you were doing a remodel on a house, you wouldn't be expected to bring the rest of the house up to code, it's true, except that if you get into a wall and you find out, wow, this wall's going to fall down if I don't reframe this wall or something. Anybody's ever done a remodel knows that you end up doing a whole lot more than you think. This is a remodel. That's what we know, is that we start accessing that road, it's a remodel. So that's the takeaway I want you to get from Michael. And the point of that is proving the hardship. We have to prove that there's a hardship, and we have to prove that either the topography, the shape of the lot, the surroundings, and existing or unusual physical conditions create a hardship. We've shown that there are existing or unusual physical conditions that are related to topography, surrounding, and the shape of a lot. So we've shown that we meet all four criteria and that it creates quite a substantial hardship, both from a safety standpoint and also from an undefinable cost standpoint that the applicant might end up getting stuck with. So that leads us to the last criteria, which is that no waiver shall be granted, which allows subdivision, short subdivision, binding site plan, which is not in the public interest as identified by RCW 5817010. And just so you know, that section of the RCW basically says you have to do things in the public interest in a very general way. So we can't do something that's not in the public interest. And staff has said that this connection is really, really necessary to release traffic congestion pressure. We have a traffic report that says that that's not true. So we dispense of that one. Staff says that we need this connection to make sure that we provide neighborhood connectivity to relieve pressure for the larger issues such as traffic that is cutting through from Highway 20, as an example, because we think that there could be some congestion on Highway 20. So each of you have in front of you a packet that looks something like this. And on the first 11-by-17 sheet in that packet, you'll see an aerial view of the city. Yeah, we have some extras. For whatever reason, this slide did not make it into our PowerPoint. We thought, I was pushing the button, looking for it. So you have it in front of you. And we can see, if you look in the lower right quadrant, you see Highway 20 coming into the city and making a bend going along the lower right part of the map and then heading out along the right edge of the map and out of town. So we see Highway 20 making that maneuver. We see our site fairly centrally located on the map. And so if you look, if you find the spot where it says site and you look just to the left of that, what you see is Lowerland Road wrapping around the site, and Lowerland Road is an arterial. You see Fairway Lane coming up around the golf course and coming into our site, just below the site. And then you see a number of other roads throughout the neighborhood connecting. And what's instructive about this, first, to look at Highway 20, is that the likelihood that somebody is on Highway 20 and is going to deviate from Highway 20 someplace, come up Swan Town Road, whether they deviate and go through roads not yet in existence along the road that's along the south of the map and cut up to a connection that is envisioned that someday might happen up to Fairway Lane, or whether they cut onto Swan Town and come up. It seems fairly unlikely that they would cut into a little 50-foot collector road that goes into our little neighborhood as a relief valve to Highway 20. That seems unlikely. So looking at the likelihood of that being an actual public interest seems highly improbable. Now, to back up my feelings of it being highly improbable, we look back to our traffic study that finds that the relationship between this site and Highway 20 is not found. There is no relationship between this site and Highway 20. So seeing a cut-through from Highway 20 to this site is unlikely. Now, let's just say that it did happen. Let's just say that that was the likelihood, and think how the neighbors in that neighborhood would feel about having Highway 20 cut through traffic, people going on vacation from South Woodby Park out to Mount Vernon and up into North Cascades, people who are traveling through, looking at the sites, looking at Deception Pass, and they don't like the congestion by the Safeway and the Walmart. And so they decide that what they'd rather do is cut through some neighborhoods through here. Think about how the people in that neighborhood are going to feel about having that traffic. In the unlikely event that that traffic did cut through, is that really a solution that Oak Harbor is looking for? I would venture it's not that. And we do have an email in the record that was written, submitted at the beginning of the hearing, saying, one neighbor saying that they thought that would be a bad idea. So on balance, we have staff saying that it is very, very much in the public interest that this access be placed here. This access that will create a hazard, this access that accesses to a substandard intersection, this access that if it functions as staff envisions, will cause cut-through traffic in a neighborhood that the neighborhood doesn't want, this access that does not relieve any pressure from this particular neighborhood or from our development or mitigate any of our trips. It seems to me that the public interest is served by not making the connection. Because if you don't make the connection, then you don't bring an access to a substandard access. If you don't make the access, you don't bring cut-through traffic into a neighborhood where the neighborhood doesn't want to see that traffic. So our job, according to that criteria, is to make a proposal that meets with the public interest. Staff says we haven't met that, and I say that staff's idea of causing this connection doesn't meet the public interest. And in fact, our studies indicate that that's true, that we will further the public interest by not making that connection. And you will probably be relieved to know that I am on the last page of my notes. I apologize for the length of my presentation. It's a very complicated project, and unfortunately, it's a contentious project because the applicant does not agree with the city. But in summary, staff agrees that we have met all the conditions, all the criteria required for approval of a PRD. Staff agrees that we've met all the criteria required for approval of a subdivision. Staff agrees that we've met all the conditions that are required for approval of the landscape plan and for the other three waivers that were requested. Staff does not agree that we have met the criteria for approval of the waiver to not place a road, that we haven't shown that there's a hardship. I believe that with the testimony and with the exhibits that you have in front of you, we have shown that we meet not just the one required criteria, but all four criteria for approval of a waiver, and that we're proposing an application that furthers the public interest by creating an economic benefit to the city and by not placing cut-through traffic into a dangerous intersection. So with that, I would encourage you to approve the application as submitted by the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, John. Okay. Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman, there is one member of the audience here, and I don't, I'm not sure whether she would wish to address the commission or not. Ma'am? I didn't know whether, I just wanted to make sure before they move on that if you wish to speak, you were given the opportunity.
It's not necessary.
Okay.
I would not like to.
Okay.
Okay, then. I'll start out. ADA compliance that was signed into law in 1991 that the engineer spoke about, okay, the trigger on that item is the street at Swan Town. Fairway Lane itself does not trigger anything for repairs or to meet code until something is done at that street or on that street. Am I correct? So that's the trigger.
Again, if we're going to answer questions from the staff, I think maybe...
is done at that street or on that street. Am I correct? So that's the trigger.
Again, if we're going to answer questions from the staff, I think maybe Joe Stowell, City Engineer, could field that one for you.
Commissioners, Joe Stowell, City Engineer. And that, that is correct.
So if nothing is done at Swan Town and this property at the face where Fairway Lane approaches, then we're under no obligation to fix anything?
Only where there's new improvements.
Only where there's new improvements. When was the Fairway Lane parceled? Originally, that was county. When did it become incorporated into the city limits?
I don't believe that it is in the city limits.
The golf was in. Fairway Lane was in.
Let's go back to the, let's go back to, yeah, Joe's, Joe's got it.
It's in, it's in, um.
What's her name?
It's in Ray's presentation.
Yeah, it's gone. Can you help me out there, Tim?
I guess my, my point to that question was, is that...
Nope. I guess that portion of it is in the city.
That is in the city.
Okay. Well, I, I, that's, that's what I thought. But again, the city is under no obligation to do anything at that intersection until improvements are made. And then sidewalks, access ramps, all of that stuff must be done at that point in time. Even a, a paving of Swan Town itself up to that point would trigger, would be a trigger.
If we did, I believe it's, what is it, an inch and a half of grinding and overlay? That we would have to do ADA improvements on it, like.
Okay. Now, let's, let's go into the, to the two project streets that they're talking about. Putnam and Robertson.
Robertson.
Yep. Okay, and I've spent a lot of time out there since getting this packet last Friday. A lot of hours during peak time, off time, and all of that. And it seemed like everything, including Lauer Road itself, there's some existing grades that are in there. There, in fact, this one lady that, that wrote the, the letter, the James family, has the pictures. And there's a direct slope throughout that entire area, some of them more than 10%, if I'm not mistaken. Driving that today, I actually parked and tried to walk it, and it's pretty steep in those neighborhoods surrounding this property. Now, if I walked and parked down on Swan Town in the parking area by the golf course, and then walk up the slope of the property, it's not as steep. So I see roadways that are within, to the, to the right of the map that's in, before you, some of the grades there are much steeper than the, than the grade for this property onto Swan Town. Physically, to walk it or to drive it. Now, I don't know when it was approved, I don't know if it was county at that point in time or what, but the point being that I saw a, a larger grade differential than it is from Swan Town up to that property. So that was some, some concerns to me. The other issue that I had in, in going around those neighborhoods all the way over to Heller, there's no traffic control. They're all yields, there's no stop signs. Now, one of the, just, just thinking, because I live in Fairway Point, and I just went through seven years of, of construction, and when this, I just found out tonight that this could be like a three-year or a three-phase project. The traffic through that neighborhood by trucks and employees, has any of that been, you know, thought about as far as, I know at any given time, we always had, you know, about 15 different contractors, and the trucks were just unbelievable. But my point being is the access into that property is going to have to come for construction, for grading, tree removal, all of that's going to have to come through those neighborhoods. Those are the only two streets. Is that correct?
I suppose there's ways that they could handle that on a temporary basis, but if, if their plan goes as, as they're proposing, I don't know any other route that they could take other than through the neighborhoods.
But then my, then my point being with that is even if they were to allow that to happen, aren't we then creating another hazard with large truck and equipments on to Swan Town because it's not a dedicated intersection? So we've still got a problem with that. That's one of the things I saw. I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, that's, it's a very good question. And just to the question of, of, of the construction traffic and our current thinking is that we have a, can I get over to our picture? You'll notice on the site plan, which should come up here quickly, there we go. There is an alley structure basically from here to here and a, sorry, there's an alley structure from here to here and a, and a utility corridor from here to here. And the intention is that during construction, that we're starting at this point in the site and working our way up the hill. You'll have before the planning commission, the model home ordinance, which was a, an ideation that came out of this project in, in, in February. But basically, we intend to start at this point in the site and use this, this access point here, which is basically the existing Marin driveway and on into the site as the construction access point for the whole site.
Okay, with that, with that.
Yep.
Okay. Have you not then created that same hazard that you said the city would be creating if we have required a street there? On a much larger scale, because these are large trucks that are coming down that grade.
You know, it's a, it's a temporary construct, it's a, it's a, it's a good question, it's a temporary construction traffic question, but yes, for the period of... John, are you going to take up?
John Bissel again. In temporary construction traffic, you typically have a flagger, a, a person who stand out there, you bring a big truck out on the road, you're going to have somebody stopping traffic to get that truck out on the road. So you eliminate the traffic hazard. When you have traffic on a normal basis, day-to-day traffic, you don't have a flagger out there saying, hey, wait, look, there's somebody coming the other way, stop. But you do have that with construction traffic. So it would be made safe with each truck that was, was going in and out of the site. Does that make sense? You look like you have another question.
Well, I, I'm just trying to picture, okay, logging trucks, grading equipment, such and such, being brought in, being taken out, and there'll be a, a flagger out there. I haven't seen that before. I mean, literally.
It's very typical, it's absolutely, yeah, yes, very, very common.
Okay, I want to ask another question. The zoning for this, this property is, is our one. Okay. I think the, the problem that I'm having with all of it is the neighborhood directly to the bottom of that picture shows that there's nine properties, okay, single-family residents, and you're proposing to put 12 backed up to them. So what I saw when I first started reading this project was, I think there was 31 properties in the project itself, and now that, that has gone from 41, 31 to 43. That's where I'm having a problem, is because the lots are much smaller. I'm already familiar with the smaller lots in a development like this, because I live in one. And that brings into question other issues regarding to street width, parking, onsite parking, deliveries, and it just, it's a dominoing effect that, that I've experienced, both in my history, my work, and even, even in the site evaluation that I've had since I've been doing this on Friday, because I've lived this document, and those questions keep coming up. Now, we take another issue, if we start using Robertson in the, in Putnam as access into that property, now you've impacted all those neighborhoods, and you've also got a steep downgrade roadway. We've already talked about, the one, the James family talked about a blind site, okay, with that one corner house. Lauer Road will probably be the most accessible street. That creates another problem, because at the end of Lauer Road and Heller, there's a school. And there's, you know, that's, that's the only intersection. And everything is downhill from, from Heller Road, going over to where your property is at, even the cutoff road. But there's virtually no traffic control there. There's no stop signs, it's just yields. There's no pedestrian crosswalks. The road is in very poor condition, and the trucks going across is to access that are going to further exacerbate the problem. That's what I saw.
Would you like me to address some of that?
Please do.
Okay. So visualizing potential traffic impacts, I think, is a really difficult thing, and I think most jurisdictions think it's a difficult thing, and that's why they require us to provide traffic studies. Because our initial reaction is, wow, 43 lots, that's going to be a whole lot of traffic. And sometimes you put 43 lots in there, and the impacts are horrible, you know, it just, it doesn't work. And other times, you put 43 lots, or 100 lots, or 200 lots in someplace, and it, and it works really, really well. And so visualizing and saying, I think this is going to be a problem, is challenging. So that's why the city required us to submit a traffic report, and then we submitted a second traffic report with the, when we chose to change how we proposed the access. And those traffic reports show that the impacts are not going to be very high. In fact, they don't change the level of service at any intersection. The peak trips would be, the peak hour, typically, they figure about one trip per unit for the peak hour, and just under 10 trips per unit for the whole day. So, you know, 400 and some odd trips, right around 400 trips, sounds like a lot of trips, but when you spread 400 trips out over a couple of different roads over the course of the day, it ends up being something you don't really notice. So, so the traffic studies show that the impacts of the traffic are very low. The traffic studies also show that the difference between the impact, whether we put a road connection in or don't put a road connection in, is not, is also something that you wouldn't notice. So it's just, there is no difference between the impacts. So, so that's what the traffic studies show, is that, is that adding the traffic is not going to be that big a deal. I know you have concern about the construction impact, and anytime you build a project, whether, whether you're putting in a new sewer line, you know, I, I've lived on a street where they're putting in a new sewer liner and rebuilding the street, had the street shut down for a year, it was awful for everybody who lived on it, but now we have a much better street. And so those impacts are temporary, and there definitely will be temporary construction impacts anytime you have construction. Again, the applicant has said that he would have the, have the construction coming off Swan Town, and it would be temporary, and we could have flaggers, and we could, you know, mitigate all of that kind of thing. So, so those are those issues. And then you had a question about the density. So with the PRD code, we're, we're meeting the standard that's allowed in the development. We could have larger lots and not provide open space, it's a trade-off. So we have smaller, smaller lots, and we provide open space, and we provide more trees, and we, you know, more native vegetation protection. The number of units doesn't really change, we're able to arrange them a little bit differently, we're able to have smaller units. The road sizes remain the standard city road sizes, so your concern about deliveries and all those would be the same whether it was a PRD or not, just meeting the, just meeting the density requirement that the, the zone has. So if, for instance, we eliminated the open space, and we went with a standard subdivision and not a PRD, we would definitely have fewer lots backed up to, I mean, the, the lots backed up to the other lots would be similar, but we wouldn't have the same vegetation on site, we wouldn't have the park space on site. So it's a trade-off that's allowed in the code, and this applicant chose to go through the code, the PRD code, and have those controls applied that, that provide some better things, but also provide some smaller lots.
Let me add just one thing. You, you indicated you're in Fairway Point, so you're in a landed gentry.
I'm in a PRD.
Yeah, you're in a landed gentry, you're in a PRD, and you're in a landed gentry property.
Correct.
And so the, the size of the lots basically came to us when we inherited the, the landed gentry concept back into the family ownership, but we made the due diligence of walking every bank in town in Oak Harbor and said, who should we be partnering with? And one name came up on all five banks, and that was Steve Waldron. So we went over and introduced ourselves, and we said, we should be knowing you. And the price point that we're targeting is the, is the Navy target military family price point, 300,000, 325,000, et cetera. So when you work backwards to what's the final price point you want to go to, what's the market you want to go to, you get back to ultimately a smaller lot, et cetera, but it's a, you know, we're trying to whittle our way down through this projected 750 housing unit demand that the, that the base is projecting, and, and, and get the first 43 opportunities there and online and, and up and running, so.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we've gone past the, or actually answering Commissioner's question and maybe providing new testimony here, so.
Okay. Sounds right. Any other help?
I, I do have some questions. So Joe, if you can come back up, I think I have some questions you might be able to answer. I got a little lost on the whole discussion about the west side of the intersection of Swan Town and Fairway Lane. I'm hearing that on one side, that the developer, the Marin Woods property, isn't responsible for anything on Fairway Lane to Swan Town, but they spend a lot of time talking about it. Are they responsible for anything if we have a road that goes through and connects to Swan Town?
The only thing that we've asked of them is that they align, so we don't end up with offset intersection like we have at O'Leary.
So the whole discussion about road grades, angles, ADA on the west side of that intersection is not something that they're responsible for?
Uh, no, that's not.
So they're not responsible for that? Okay. So the question about the access there, does, does emergency services speak up on this issue at all? I mean, you know, there's going to be a new west side fire station, Swan Town's going to be pretty much a straight shot to it. Is that an issue? Do they, do they get involved in the whole access? I mean, you've got 42 new houses. If you don't put that road through, then they've got to go through kind of sort of kewettus route to get into the community.
You know, they're given an opportunity to comment on applications like this, and I can't remember what their response is.
I, I don't believe that they identified the lack of connection as a public safety issue. But, but Joe's correct, they, they are a, a regular participant in the process with us.
So the, the issue about the intersection from the Marin Woods property onto Swan Town and the grade, again, I'm not an expert on this stuff, so could you compare, for example, what this angle of grade is going to be there, let's say, to where Shannon Forrest comes onto Swan Town, which is a fairly steep grade?
You know, I have a previous application that was submitted with the roadway. I don't know how to best share this, but it shows the profile of the road connecting with no greater than a 10% grade. At the intersection, the only flaw that we saw in it was that it wasn't horizontally aligned with Fairway Lane.
Okay, so maybe this brings up the other question, which is, what is the city's perspective on the liability issue that was raised?
You know, I, I can take a, a stab at that one. I'm a professional engineer. I heard a lot of the comments being made earlier about ethics and morals and, and safety, and I take them wholeheartedly. It's my job to look out for those things for the whole city, where I, where, where it's my part to do that. Michael Ryan is a PE, and I, and I appreciate that, that his perspective on it. And frankly, the previous design had his stamp on it. So it may not have been a complete one, and it is preliminary drawing, but it does demonstrate, I believe, that one can be done safely.
You know, and, and again, there's a lot of discussion about quality of life versus, you know, pressure relief from Highway 20, and, you know, I don't see that becoming a pressure relief for Highway 20 personally, but you know, there are, are some quality of life issues of making it easier to get in and out of a neighborhood and to get to Safeway via Swan Town versus having to drive through 12 different streets to get out to Heller, down to Swan Town, through what we know is a hazardous intersection at the corner of... a hazardous intersection at the corner of Swan Town and Heller, and has a huge history of accidents. So I guess that was just a thought as I'm going through this.
You know, would you mind if I commented on that?
Please.
The idea of having connectivity between neighborhoods is so that there's alternative routes throughout the whole city, not this project in particular, but on a whole.
Right.
So if we don't look for that, like in Island Place, or Beckett Landing, or these other projects that are coming forward, and keep that in mind, there's not many other places for traffic to go other than 20. Because if you think about the ways that we, opportunities we have to go north-south or east-west in this town, there are very few, so we have to do the best we can to protect those.
And if you would entertain just an addendum onto that comment, unfortunately, I think the applicant has taken great liberties with misreading perhaps, or just misquoting the staff report with respect to reference to SR 20. The staff report does not say that we're looking to use this neighborhood and this project and this connection as a relief valve for SR 20. It rather is what Joe has just provided for the commission, that the general backdrop to the connectivity conversation in the city of Oak Harbor is embodied in our code and our comprehensive plan, has as one of its goals to alleviate level of service problems and pressure on SR 20. But I want to be very clear, that our staff report does not say that we are pointing to this neighborhood as a means to be providing that traffic congestion.
I don't have anything else, thank you.
Cesar?
One of the biggest questions I got with us here is, if they sit there and we have them build the road going into Swan Town, and then the other side is not done, what's going to drive that to be upgraded? Because once we start on that side, don't we have to sit there and start upgrading that into ADA and, you know, 2016 compliances?
If there wasn't an ADA facility there, we don't have to install a new one. So I don't believe there are ADA facilities on the Fairway Lane side, so we wouldn't have to install them. And it goes back to kind of what was quoted in the Find the Right section here. You know, it's, and I'm just going back, and it is just the forwarded ASHTO manual, but it sets, kind of, it answers your question, really, I think. It says, "The fact that new design values are presented here and does not imply that existing streets and highways are unsafe, nor does it mandate the initiation of improvement As far as I've seen with what the applicant's provided, they haven't demonstrated a safety issue at that intersection. The engineering reports that we've received address level of service, but I don't know that they go much further than that. Brad, do you know if they go further than just level of service?
They don't, and we would expect that the...
I'm sorry. Yeah, Brad, hop on up.
I'm Brad Bluth, I'm one of the staff engineers, and I have both of Gibson's traffic studies here, the width and the without, and neither one of them, first of all, they're both stamped reports by a professional engineer. Neither one of them point out any kind of danger with a connection or without a connection. So their job in this report to say, "A connection would be dangerous." There is no language. In fact, in the initial report with the connection through, they say there's adequate site distance for connection to Swan Town. There's also some other language here that I'd have to find, but basically says they can provide a safe connection. It doesn't mention anything about inherent danger or any kind of collision increase. I also have accident data. Going back 10 years, there's three accidents, actually, I'm sorry, two accidents and one incident. One accident was an 89-year-old woman turning around at Fairway Lane to Swan Town, she was making a turnaround, and she backed into the stop sign. I don't think that was caused by the intersection. Another one, an 87-year-old woman was turning left onto Swan Town, heading northwest, and was clipped by a truck heading northwest on Swan Town. The third incident, somebody found debris, a motorcycle mirror, and skid marks in the road. No accident was reported. Nobody saw or witnessed, it sounds like a motorcycle slid their motorcycle down and picked it back up and left.
I'm going to ask staff the same thing, that we answered the questions that were posed to us.
Got you. That's all I got.
Thanks.
So on the hardship issue, is it my understanding that perhaps we're not talking about more than $380,000 as far as the city staff is concerned, with all the items that could arise that would be of an expense to the developer? I guess that's...
I think in short form, development has a cost associated with it.
I understand that. My question is undue burden. I mean, that was one of the four things that you had to prove as the developer to get a waiver. Is that, in your mind, a bit unfounded, or...
I believe so, but I'm going to defer to Steve. He drafted the response on that one, and he's more versed in it.
Give me just a moment, Chairman, to pull up the binder. I think staff would like to make probably two main points with respect to that, and I'll address first your question about the $380,000. It's difficult for us to address costs outside of that. Understand the applicant's concern and position that they're worried about additional costs, that's reasonable. But I think you've heard from Mr. Stowell that we're not focused on improvements across the street or on the other side at Fairway Lane, and so the costs that the applicant was anticipating as part of their project there do not seem to be part of the project. As a footnote to that, we always keep our eye on proportionality. Need to be sure that we're not asking for a developer to do more than the code requires of their project. And so that's always something that we keep our eye on. Focusing more directly on the $380,000, what we attempted to do for you on page 15 of the staff report is to really parse out that $380,000. And I think Joe said it very succinctly with just the one statement, which is, "There is a cost of development that is fairly typical." We're not trying to trivialize that cost by any stretch of the imagination, but we're also, we also don't believe that using that cost as the means to provide or prove the burden is actually carrying the day in this particular instance. And the reason that we think that is at the bottom of page 15, those three bullet points. We've talked about the $145,000, which they have attributed to the cost of the existing house. Again, not making light of a decision to remove a home. We're merely pointing out that that is not unusual. And our take on this waiver process is that we're being asked to be able to say to you that this is an unusual thing, and it warrants a deviation from the standards, to use a different word. We've talked a little bit about, or you've heard the applicant talk a little bit about the perceived loss of a lot, and the $90,000 associated with that. Not to be flippant, but until you get to the end of the process, you don't have a particular number of lots. Yes, we work very hard with the applicant so that they can reach the maximum number of lots that are possible, but that is not typically at the expense of meeting the standards. And then finally, the other $145,000 that they've attributed to the 380 burdensome dollars is really those things associated with normal street construction. The somewhat unusual factor there, and we admit that, is the retaining walls. But the rest of it, I think, is really sort of normal cost, although it's a little difficult for us to figure out how to assign or accept a cost related to the loss of mature landscaping. Again, that's a pretty regular part of redeveloping any piece of property unless you've made conscious steps to save that. So I think that's how we'd like to address that particular point for you. And if I've not covered your question, please let me know, and I'll take a different run at it.
Steve, were you here when the city annexed, or when the property was annexed into the city?
I was here when the Marin Woods property was annexed, yes.
Okay. Would this have been considered, had it not been an access road to Swan Town?
You know, I'm not going to try to speculate as to what the council would or would not have done. I know that it was part of the conversation, obviously, and the record supports that. It was part of the conversation between the city and the applicant, and that was, you know, presented to the council. And I'll let you draw your own conclusions.
Thank you. So Steve, when would this access road, if it has to be done, when would it, would it be done initially? How does that work?
Well, that actually is really, to a large degree, up to the applicant. And it's whether or not they intend to phase the project. I think we understand that they have talked about phasing the project. I think we heard Mr. Durn earlier this evening say that they are working from Swan Town up the hill, which would mean that that piece would go in first. Sometimes we see phasing for something of a 40-lot size. Sometimes we see just sort of a blow-and-go approach, and we're going to put down all of the infrastructure and all of the lots in a single phase.
Okay. Any other questions, Hal? Cesar? So we need to come up with a motion?
listed staff's recommended action, so if that's of any help to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, I move that we recommend to the city council disapproval of the above-listed preliminary PLAT, preliminary PRD subdivision waivers and associated permits for the Marin Woods project and adopted findings of fact in Attachment K.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just real quick, Mr. Kamak pointed out to me that I think he believes that the hearing is still open. You would normally have closed it. And then, secondly, if I could ask, with that motion still on the table, if staff could ask for a five-minute break to confer with the applicant?
Yes.
And then we could come back to you. If that would be acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll close.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that brief opportunity to converse with the applicant. The applicant believes that they've heard some new information this evening with respect to the Fairway Lane side of Swan Town, and we both think that there's an opportunity here for us to look at that question a little bit more closely. In other words, what is, what are their obligations versus what aren't their obligations? So with that in mind, we'd like to ask for a continuance on this matter. For right now, I'll just propose that we go to the next date, because that will preserve our advertising. So the October date remains to be seen whether or not we would make it there.
So I did good by not closing the public meeting, then?
You had the foresight...
The public hearing, right.
You had the foresight, Mr. Wossinger, to not do that.
So should we withdraw the motion in the second, then?
I would.
I think...
Yeah. If the commission is fine with that, that's, I think that would be a great way, because then we're coming back, starting with a clean slate, perhaps, with some new thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, with no objection, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
And I would like to withdraw the second.
Okay. So at this point, in this matter, I guess we were going to just do a continuance.
Continuance until the October, whatever that is, 27?
October 23rd, is it?
25th, I think.
25th, okay. Well, Tuesday, Thursday.
They're all pretty much the same at some point, yeah.
Okay, with that in mind, I guess we, do we go on to the next item?
Oh, I don't think so. I think that the LID item is really for your information, so we think we've used enough of your time tonight.
Okay, well, in that case, I call the meeting adjourned.